1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109
This board meeting of the Board of Education for April 27, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Thank you all for joining us tonight, especially Board colleagues after quite a lot of work that we did on Saturday. Director Scott has let me know that he is running a little late tonight, but he will be joining us shortly and asked us to go ahead and get started without him this evening. So he is on his way. Our first agenda item tonight is a resolution to celebrate Teacher and School Administrator Appreciation Week, which begins May 3. This week is a favorite custom in schools as students and parents have a chance to show how much they appreciate their teachers and principals. No doubt this year will feel especially special as many students and families are able to celebrate our teachers and principals in person. And I personally have to add that I am very thankful for the Cleveland principal, Joanne Watkins, who this year has done just a wonderful job of communicating with parents, making herself available. Roseanne's doing the, Roseanne's got a kid at Cleveland too. So she knows, just really, Joanne's done an excellent job of also kind of forming community as we're distant. And so thank you very much to Joanne Watkins and to Mr. Fane, Paige's, my daughter Paige is a sophomore at Cleveland, her chemistry teacher. She got to have chemistry on Thursday, her first day back to in-person. She was a little nervous and they got to do some experiments with liquid nitrogen and Paige has not stopped talking about it since. So being back in the classroom, starting right off with a really fun, exciting experiment has been really great to see such a huge change in my daughter's sort of demeanor. So thank you to all of those teachers out there and all of those principals who have done an amazing pandemic. Would any other board members like to share a thank you to a teacher or a principal?
I would like to share, this is Director Konstam. I would just like to say that I'm really missing the usual ritual this week of flooding the front office with homemade cookies and flowers and casseroles and all those acts of kindness that parents usually do for our teachers and our staff this week. I always love that. So we'll get you next year.
Yeah, I'd like to just join Director Konstam. Not being a person who's very skilled in the kitchen, though, that was never the way in which I expressed my thanks. It usually was just a heartfelt thanks to the teachers. And as somebody who is a product of Portland Public Schools, I had 13 years of hundreds and my kids, three kids in PPS for 18 years, hundreds of teachers have impacted both my life and my kids' lives. And there are so many ways in which I see now my kids as adults have been positively impacted by special teachers who took the time and care to either teach them new skills or life lessons. So just a lot of gratitude to all the teachers of PPS. And then since we're both, we're also recognizing school administrators, just a shout out to the administrators. In my tenure, not applicable for when I was a student, but my tenure as a board member, principals have been, you know, a group of individuals who have really formed my thinking about educational practices, the challenges of effectively managing and leading a school, been sources of wisdom and inspiration for me and great thought partners as I, as in my work as a board member, both in the early 2000s and now. So just thanks to the principals and the assistant principals and vice principals throughout PPS and the other administrators who have made me a better board member and I think made our district a better, a better place for our students. So thanks to everybody.
I'll go next. I think back to my grandmother who moved to Portland in 1940 with a teaching certificate from Xavier University and a photograph that I have that I look at probably once a week of her teaching her second graders. And her second graders are some of her teenagers and it's taken in, in the South, outside of New Orleans in a small town in the countryside. And, and also, you know, both of my parents are teachers and the teachers that have impacted my own kids and the ones that have taken the time to stay after school to talk about said kids. Just want to share a deep appreciation for teachers and administrators. Thanks.
I know that we're all very grateful to our teachers who do amazing things every day. And outside of my personal experiences as a parent, we also just hear so many wonderful things and encounter them, having gotten to go on school visits as we've reopened the last few weeks has been wonderful, just seeing people in the classrooms, talking with administrators throughout the buildings, just the vibrancy and just what you said, Michelle, that sort of centering of students and, and deep care for students that, that changes lives. That's, so thank you all very much. And thank you to the communities that do such a great job of thanking our teachers during this appreciation of Teacher and Administrator Week. All right. I have to find where I am in my script. Oh, we get to now make a motion. So do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6292, Resolution to Celebrate Teacher and School Administrator Appreciation Week?
So moved.
All right, I heard Director Brim Edwards move and Director Bailey second, the adoption of Resolution 6292. Is there any further board discussion?
Do I have to declare a conflict of interest because my wife is a teacher?
Well, since we just reviewed our ethic statement this weekend, I would say yes. You, we, you can't thank her, but the rest of us will thank her in this moment. How does that work?
I thank her every day and.
I was gonna say, Scott, there's no such thing as too much gratitude.
Absolutely. And this is, she's winding up her career this year. And it's been a, of course incredibly challenging year for all of our teachers. It's been a privilege to be in classrooms earlier this year when it was all virtual and just watch our teachers go above and beyond engaging with students. And now to see on those first days of back in person, to see the excitement that our teachers had in seeing the kiddos that they knew virtually and, and now how to get used to saying, oh, okay, now I'm seeing you with a mask, I'm seeing your eyes now. And, you know, just dealing with once again, a whole different communications venue. So thank you again to our teachers and our APs and VPs and principals.
Director Scott, we are doing our, we're about ready to vote on the Resolution 6292, Teachers, to celebrate Teacher and School Administrator Appreciation Week. And I gave the other directors an opportunity to, to share any gratitudes they had for teachers or administrators and just wanted to give you that opportunity as well.
Yeah, thank you and my apologies for, for being late. I'm trying to navigate single parenting for this week. Yeah, no, thanks. And I, I'll just, I caught a little bit of what Director Bailey had to say and I would just, I would, I would echo those and I'm sure I'm echoing the comments of, of everyone else. I mean, I think watching, watching what our teachers have, have been able to accomplish as, as, as we switch, you know, to virtual and, 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 you know, and now back into a hybrid. And, you know, it, it has been, it's been an extraordinary year and, you know, a, you know, a unprecedented, which the word is overused, but, but in this case actually, you know, is, is accurate. And, you know, I just think, I think, I think watching that throughout the year is, has been really sort of inspiring, right? And, and how they, they reframed everything they did. And then, you know, the administrators, the same thing, getting, you know, that pivot was so fast last spring and, you know, to then, you know, work in a different environment this year and then to get their buildings ready again for a return of, of students has, has been remarkable to watch. So I, I think I heard Director Bailey saying, you know, these reopening moments to, to see people in person have been great, but it's also just a reminder, I mean, watching the kids, you know, the kindergartners who, it was their first day of school, but of course the teachers knew them and they knew them all by name, but it was the first time they had met in person. And, you know, it was really, I think, sort of, you know, emblematic of, of, of what the year, what the year has been and, and, and I think what it, what it, you know, will be moving forward. So, so yeah, thank you and a huge appreciation and shout out to, to everyone for, for what they've done this year.
Thank you, Director Scott. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on this resolution?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6292, Resolution to Celebrate Teacher and School Administrator Appreciation Week. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6292 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Directors. We turn now to our consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda, we will set those aside for discussion and vote after we deal with the rest of the consent agenda. But first, Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
All right, thank you. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull from the consent agenda?
So I don't have an item that I want to have a separate vote on, but I do have some just questions and comments on two of the items. So I don't know what your preference is. Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, let's do that during our, just our board discussion after we make the motion and we can talk about them there. Director Moore, you're muted. Rita, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm on the phone, so it gets extra complicated. I'd like to pull out Resolution 6291.
Okay, Resolution 6291 is the approval of the updated Bond Accountability Committee Charter. So we will remove that from the consent agenda and deal with that after we do the rest of the consent agenda. Any other items to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Do I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Director Konstam moves and, no, yeah, Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
So I. Yeah, thank you. Um, so there were, there were a number of really big items in our consent agenda this, this week and a couple that I, I felt merited just pulling, pulling out. And one is the middle school science curriculum adoption and materials adoption. And I guess going forward, I'd love to have this be maybe a separate agenda item or just pulled out because we're getting ready to make some pretty significant investments in our curriculum. And this came out of the, the 2020 bond that we had $53 million set aside for the adoption of curricular curriculum instruction materials. So Superintendent Greer, do you want me just to direct the question to, to you or do I did give staff a preview of what I was gonna ask?
I'm happy to give it a go, but I want to make sure that our senior staff gets practice answering your questions. So, look, I, I, I think it's important to say at the onset, you're right, we're so fortunate that voters are supporting long overdue curricular debt. And so identifying high quality material is, is critical to, to the educational program we want to provide. And so it, it might be helpful to sort of just give an overview because you're right, Director Brim Edwards, you're gonna start to see these on a regular basis. And so this is one content area. It's important because, you know, we want to make sure our students have access to next generation science standards, which, you know, even though they were adopted nationally in 2013, the district here, you know, hadn't really sort of given our educators sort of opportunities to, to have those updated materials. So, so, and, and, and you'll see how that, there's like a recurring theme there. So this, this afternoon had a chance to get an update on how our visual performing arts and music curriculum adoptions are going. So I'm excited about what's on deck there, but we welcome your questions. We have Deputy Superintendent Quayre and our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Valentino here, who, who can provide all the details.
Awesome, thank you. That was a good overview. So I guess my, my first one, and this really is part of the, sort of our broader curriculum adoption from the 2020 bond. So this is $2.6 million. And when we passed the, the bond, it was that in, with the premise that 53 million would be a K-12, all subjects. And I just want to make sure as, as we head into this, it's 2.6 million for middle grade science that this fits within that scope of we'll be able to do like the K-12 all subjects that we, we told voters.
Do you want to go first, Dr. Quayre?
Thank you, Dr. Valentino. Thank you for the question, Director Brim Edwards. And this is a really good opportunity just to echo the sentiments of the superintendent for us to have an overview to start having this discussion because this is not going to be the first or the last. So this will be an ongoing series of discussions as we continue to embark on this very important critical work, which we are so, so fortunate, you know, that the members of our community have, you know, have, have truly entrusted us in, in, in believing in what our vision is for what we're trying to do for students. And so I wa, I wanted to tee up Dr. Valentino, who has been our lead on this, on, in this And so I wa- I wanted to tee up Dr. Valentino, um, who has been our lead um on this uh on in this work since he first arrived into PPS. And we're also joined by Susan Holbeck, um, who has been um, who has been absolutely a um, a fantastic support and leader um in our curriculum department specifically for science. She is also our interim STEAM director, um, who has been um, you know, filling in with a with a critical need and and helping support the work from a STEAM level, um, who has also served in this capacity and and helping push together uh this curriculum endeavor. So with that being said, I'll tee it up for Dr. Valentino and um for Susan um to go ahead and um be able to answer your question. So, Dr. V?
Thank you. So good evening, President Laurie, Superintendent Guerrero, um, directors. The adoption, um, the science adoption um is aligned with the evolving um constructs uh around curriculum adoption. We have taken the C Mac process, which is the um, the state of Oregon's process for the adoption of instructional materials and taking it more broadly and more deeply. Such that it allows for front loading of the learning for us as 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 content uh teams and also leadership teams to better understand what in the discipline are considered pedagogic, sound pedagogical practices. Um, and what what is the disciplinary literacy attached to that? So the subject merit, the subject matter that we're looking to adopt. Based on that, we be began to develop a comprehensive handbook on the curriculum adoption process that took this work deeper. And in the memo that you received a couple of days ago, you should have had a link to that particular document. And it might have even been attached to some of the answers to the questions today, maybe not. But the idea is that we're going to follow a set of guiding principles that informs how we're going to be adopting curriculum regardless of the subject area, whether it's preschool, whether it's first grade, or whether it's uh for high school language arts. And so saying that, what you will see consistently in all of our adoptions is a a memo that will actually reflect the thinking behind the adoption of that particular um program based on those guiding principles that I have been describing. And at another time, be more than happy to take you deeper into that particular document that frames our adoption process. But the idea is that we will learn from previous adoptions in terms of cost, in terms of expectations at the time that that particular adoption took place. Now, you remember, some of those adoptions are very, very old, like elementary science is twenty four years. So there's not a lot of documentation left around what happened then. But we're trying to learn from the past so that we can create a present that actually leads us to a stronger future in terms of how curriculum is used in our instructional program as we um evolve with our vision plan and our strategic plan and our curriculum frameworks, that there was an alignment between the content, the teaching practices and the student learning. And so this science adoption uh was based on um extensive um di- dialogue with teachers, with some site administrators, through direct conversation, through um survey. But also the team internally did a lot of its own learning and reflecting on what they were trying to accomplish based on what we wanted in alignment with the next generation science standards, that we actually aligned the practices with the with the right curriculum that was that would be used for the next seven year cycle, which is the goal of the bond to put us back on track with the seven year curricular adoption cycle. Um, and so specifically to that process, uh Susan Holbeck can actually speak to that more directly in terms of what she and her team accomplished during this particular adoption cycle to make sure that the recommendation that was brought to you really reflected all of those things that I was sharing with you.
And um, maybe just to be, put a fine point on the question about the overall budget. I really appreciate understanding what the approach is, especially as we go into a pretty significant, well, very significant investment. That there's some sort of overarching budget mechanism that at the end of the day, we're not going to say, hey, we ran out of money for high school social studies or, you know, elementary art or is there is there sort of an overriding budget process by which we make sure that the fifty five million will result in um ad- adoptions across all grades, which is what and subject areas?
Yes, Director Albert, um, this goes back to last year when the superintendent said, guess what? Giving you the opportunity to include yourself in the bond process. And uh after cartwheels, I went back to the team and said, okay, here's a great opportunity. One of the things that we have to think about is both not only the instructional aspects of this curriculum, but the financial consequences and the the limits to what we actually, so that we can come up with a a budget that we believe would align with what the what the what our ask would be. And so we went back last year and we actually looked at previous adoptions and their costs. We worked closely with Lynette Inkstrom. Um, and she, who has completed many adoptions and and many contracts, worked with us to identify what the estimated cost would be. At the same time, the team went back to look at the various programs in each of the disciplines and what the estimate costs would be. And we incorporated all of that into coming up with some estimates that then became a large complex spreadsheet around our costs for the adoptions. And we sort of put our own limits uh per per level and per subject area to make sure that whatever ask would be would definitely be um manageable, that we would actually be able to to fund it and then not be, which, you know, would be detrimental to 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 our ability to implement instruction if we weren't able to fund appropriately. And so Susan Holbeck can actually speak more directly to that particular question, uh Director Edwards, because she was on the ground doing that.
Before we go to to Susan here, uh just for clarity here, the these particular contracts will ensure our middle grades teachers, science teachers each have a kit uh for for each of the the topic areas. They're not sharing. They don't have to deal with the central warehouse. They will have what they need to teach during the course of the scope and sequence of the year. But as far as financial oversight and making sure there's accountability to um th- those those resources set aside to to handle curriculum instruction. Claire, uh, can can you assure our directors that there'll be oversight?
Sure.
Just want to make sure that we don't end up with like no social studies curriculum.
Of course. Well, well, that's already the case, but Claire, can you talk about?
Yeah, that what we have is we have an office of school modernization that runs our bond programs. And in partnership with our um te- office of teaching and learning and our information technology, our IT instructional technology as well, and our um finance team. Altogether, um, we are creating a system of tracking our bond programs. Everything goes in through the E Builder system, which is where we track all of our bond projects. It's where we manage um the budget and then we reconcile that to our financial system. So the Office of School Modernization is the gatekeeper, if you will, of tracking all the bond funds and how they're being spent. There's a whole um, uh, we've added some finance staff into the Office of School Modernization to help track these expenditures. And also working with the teams, so they're working with Louise and team, um, um, Louise, Dr. Valentino and team with um, and as well as um Chief Wolf's team in IT and then also in all the construction so that we have uh oversight in each each area has a budget to work from. And then it's, and there's an over um structure between the Office of School Modernization of tracking all expenditures. And then in finance, we're also tracking bond sales, interest earnings, bond premiums, all those components. And between all the four areas of the organization, we have a a networked um structure to make sure that there is multiple layers of um tracking budget and making sure that we're in compliance as well as um having uh staying within the budget that's been allotted from um the election by our voters.
So is it fair to say Deputy Hertz that um, much like we maintain accountability for for bond expenditures that, you know, we we would be looking at more areas looking forward, given that there's more facets to to bond twenty twenty, and this would be another area. And and then I would invite directors to actually crosswalk the expenditures with a tracker of the curricular areas across all the grade levels. So something that the team, you know, I'm sure has no shortage of project and Gantt charts. But since since we uh, since we teleported Susan Holbeck in here, I would love it if she gave us a a quick commercial around, you know, for the stuff that we're proposing to to purchase, uh, how's it rigorous to meet, you know, updated standards? Uh, how how is it rigorous uh enough to differentiate for diverse learners? And um, if you could say a word about, you know, does does this material help to support a focus area on climate uh change and climate justice, that would be great.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak on this topic. The the CPUP third edition, which is what we're asking um for approval tonight for purchase with bond funds, is actually um the the newest iteration of the CPUP curriculum that we've been using, which was the second edition. And in, it has many advantages that we can build on. We already own some materials that we can use. So as far as good stewards or taxpayer money, we're able to achieve our goals of a a single scope and sequence by having a kit, like we have said, for every teacher that would not have been really achievable if we had gone to a completely new and different curriculum. So by building on the assets that we already have, we can build on the climate change, climate justice units that we've already begun to create, that we were doing this year uh during distance learning. That work can move forward. We have already been working on differentiation for our special education students, our tag and um and our ESL students within the CPUP curriculum. It is a highly rated curriculum from Ed Reports, so it has met the criteria of meeting the standards. But it also will help us achieve the PPS uh vision for our graduates um at PPS. So we're really excited about the curriculum. It's um student centered, it's issue based. Students will be solving real problems in in the world using science. We were able to negotiate through the contract of three years of professional development for free from our vendor that we will help to build a teacher cadre of experts that we can then continue our own professional development moving forward. So I I'm just really excited for this opportunity. I feel like we really took a lot of information in and made a really good decision that will support our middle school science teachers. And they were very excited about the prospect of these materials. And um, and I'm hoping that you will be too.
Thank you, Ms. Holbeck. Um, Superintendent, um, one of the, one of the things that um is also really important to note is to Deputy um Hertz's framing of how we're going to make sure that we stay in alignment with the with with the bond compliance issues um and ensure that we fund properly is the ma- the daily management of it. And Mary Mary Weiner, um, whom we met once before, um, will uh be the project manager for this for our part of the bond to ensure the daily accounts and the accountability is aligned. Ms. Weiner, do you want to, do you want to mention that a bit?
Yeah, definitely. So so I'm managing with the kind of the overall adoption process, which is how, you know, we're kind of building the plane as we are flying it. We've got some great adoption starting and rolling. So it's that adoption toolkit, if you haven't gotten a chance to take a look at it, I would recommend that you dive into that. Um, and it's not completely.
Sorry, Ms. Weiner, I'm having a really hard time hearing you. Um, so if you could uh get a little closer or speak just a little more slowly, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Sorry, the internet's very spotty in my house. Um, so yes, so the adoption toolkit is a great resource. So if you haven't gotten a chance to take a look at that, I would totally recommend that you dive in. It shows kind of the process we're going through uh with each of our adoptions from defining process to execution to evaluating. And um just to go back to what Director Brim Edwards had talked about in regards to finance, um, we have been working hard to make sure that we don't have this feast and famine mentality of spending all of our bond funding in the beginning and then in five years wondering, where has it all gone? How have we not funded all of our curriculum? And so I've actually been working hard to combat that mentality with a lot of our program administrators, saying we do have funding set aside. We are managing day to day. We are sticking within our budget. We're leveraging general funds to help us execute this bond because that is a huge part of the work that we are doing of professional development and other items that are not compensable under the bond. So I I'm definitely on top of it and definitely trying to combat that that and making sure that all of our adoption leads and content leads are taking a really strategic approach to this. And we don't need to spend all of this money within the first year. It's much more important that we define the process, evaluate our current programming, come up with a really solid plan for our adoption and execute that adoption and evaluate, evaluate, evaluate the effectiveness. So we we definitely have a plan for the money. We are on schedule so far. And if anything, I am trying to emphasize to people that it doesn't need to be spent the first year.
There's been many years where there hasn't been money for curriculum. So I can imagine that once, now that there is a lot of excitement. I mean, I know that issue of not having enough kits in our middle schools for science rooms has been an issue that lots of teachers have raised. So thank you. That answers all my questions. And I really appreciate of people raising, just as the first one coming through the process.
Uh, Rita, before I go to you, I just want to say I'm so excited um listening to you all speak about what's coming for our students with the curriculum and all of the incredible work that you all have done to to think so thoughtfully about how can we steward well what we have and um still give our students an incredibly rigorous, fresh, new um approach to um this, the curriculum. And I especially love the the way you're being intentional about adding climate change and thinking about how we make sure we're spending across all of our subject areas so that all of our students have this opportunity.
Uh, yeah, I I want to.
Do you have something to add?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, it, yeah, before we leave this budget question, um, first I want to um kind of echo my colleagues' comments about um all the great work that's going on and how exciting it is. Um, I guess I would like to take a longer view and suggest that um we should not, we as a district, um, should not rely solely on bond money to maintain a a an up to date curriculum. And at some point, you know, even with good stewardship, at some point, the bond money is going to run out. And the district needs to be in the habit of having an an annual budget line to refresh curriculum. I would, um, w- we are where we are because the that did not happen in the past. And I hope we have collectively learned that lesson. So um, I I appreciate that you've got a strategic plan for the use of the bond funds and that you're, you know, exercising good stewardship. But I, I'm going to be leading the board sooner than, well, soon. So I'm going to send these thoughts out to the future boards. That there must be a commitment to annual um budgets for curriculum. Um, we cannot allow this to happen again. Um, so thank you again for all your work.
Rita, really important point. I don't think it's anyone's intention to dig ourselves back in a fresh, new hole, um, but it's still worth saying.
Right, Director Brim Edwards, do you have any further questions on this matter?
Scott's trying to say something.
Oh, sorry, my internet is really wonky right now. I apologize. Scott, go ahead.
My kids were in school during that period where there was a long stretch with no curriculum updates. In the mid two thousands, I actually served on two different uh curriculum materials committees uh in the social sciences for high school and um middle school. So I want to say this, this adoption, the materials sound great. Sounds like you got great participation and support from our teachers. Cost effective, all that good stuff. And uh, at least when we were doing curriculum adoption in the two thousands, it was a requirement of the state that we do public engagement around the adoption. Was there any public engagement? Um, was there any public engagement with this adoption?
There was none for the third edition, but there was for the second edition. So the third edition is just a refresh of the curriculum to the new standards, and at that time, there was public engagement.
And that was a couple of years ago?
That was, that was seven years ago, I believe.
Seven years ago.
Director Bailey, just to follow up with that, the adoption process as a whole has a large engagement section within that process, where we do work with community engagement and students and teachers and administrators and community-based organizations. So that is actually a large part of the adoption toolkit. This was very specific to CPUP and the renewal to CPUP three, so we were able to take advantage of the new materials. But um, you will probably hear shortly about some of our other adoptions, uh, some of our math adoptions within the upcoming month or two. So we will talk a lot about that engagement process, and it is a huge part of our process, and it's so important to us that we get feedback from all different parties. So uh, wait with bated breath, because we're gonna talk a lot more about that.
Thank you. Um, I, I think we're ready to move off of this topic unless there's any other burning questions before we, okay, seeing none, um, let me know, call her if you actually have one. Um, Director Brim Edwards, you said you had another question about an item on the consent agenda?
So I say, I mean, there's a lot of um, things that we're funding and voting for as part of the contracts this evening. And one of them, there's a series of, I, I think we're accept, accepting grants, um, about $2 million worth of grants for um, through the Student Success Act, um, going to Lent, Oakley Green, Boise Elliott, Kelly Peninsula, Woodmere, Sitten, and Vestal. Um, and maybe this also, I could put a pin in this, um, because it may or may not be connected to presentations we're having later on this evening, um, related to the, both the budget, um, and also um, learning acceleration. So my, so my, just the high level question is, I understand these are summer program grants through the Student Success Act. Um, are these uh, 2021 or 2122 budget items? And is this, this is state money, it's not the federal grant money that's flowing through? There's that $250 million um, that the state has for summer programming. This is separate, is that accurate?
I'm so glad Leslie Odell has changed. There's one thing that Leslie and the team, as a matter of practice, does, is maximize all available resources out there, state, local, national, philanthropic uh, and foundation monies, and braiding all of those, you know, towards our goals. And so, you know, Leslie has, has the benefit of sort of keeping all those strands straight to to support the, the activities and the investments that we wanna make. But you wanna shed a little light on that, Leslie?
I sure will, thank you. Um, so, so the eight schools that were funded, um, this was prior, this was part of the SSA package, and it's about 700, it was originally 750,000, and now it's, it's actually up to about 775. Each school has a, having its designation. And so this is part of our Student Success Act um, funding. And, and so this is not necessarily related to our COVID relief, but it is braided within our new efforts. And our team is uh, keenly aware of the requirements and uh, and everything. And so again, it's, it's to supplement uh, schools that maybe um, haven't had the additional uh, resources that uh, that they've, they, they might have uh, needed. And so this was intentional, uh, this will be for, it's a three-year package. It was supposed to be last year, but we had a little hiccup called um, quarantine. And so uh, so they have now moved that. And so it's this year and next year certainly, and then they'll be working on the third year. So it's a three-year package, it's available for the summer and summer programming exclusively.
And so this is in, in person?
This is our best efforts. Um, you know, this all folds into the summer, th- this is all braided within what ODE's summer programming guidelines are. So our best efforts for in-person, um, absolutely. But again, um, we, we, we really need to listen to the needs of our communities and to, to, to present a comprehensive offering for all students that we are needing to, to serve, um, to have an opportunity to do that.
So is, is there a CDL component of this for, comprehensive distance learning for students who, if this is all in-person? Is there a?
So I'm going to, this is where the learning acceleration team gets to.
Yeah, well, you can tell me, we're gonna cover this later on in the presentation. Uh, I just want to, because we're voting on these, then I know the district has out the uh, RFP for $10 million for summer programming with our community-based partners as well. Um, so I'm just trying to try to fit all the, where, all the pieces.
It, it, and I appreciate this, because it is a puzzle, and we have lots of different, lots of different streams coming in. And we have an amazing team looking at all of the pieces of the puzzle to serve our community. And so this is, this is gonna come in, um, you will hear more about it with our learning acceleration.
And, and Director Brim Edwards, that, that, that's a really good question, and that will be covered in the presentation. But also, um, Ms. Narenberg and Dr. Himal will be prepared to answer that question for you, because that's a topic that they're prepared to engage um, with the board on.
And um, I don't have any other questions other than shout out to, I think, maybe Director Constam's committee and the Rosemary Anderson Culinary um, CTE track. I don't know if that went through the committee, but anyway, I was about to see that in the agenda, and that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Okay, any other board members have questions about any other item in the consent agenda? Okay, um, the board will, is there any public comment on the consent agenda, Ms. Bradshaw?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on resolutions six two eight eight um, through six two, I'm trying to remember the number of the one you pulled, Rita. I told myself I should write it down, but I didn't. Um, so.
Six two nine one.
Yeah, so we'll vote through.
Six two nine one was what we pulled.
Okay, so we'll vote on six two eight eight, six two eight nine, six two nine zero, and six two nine five. Those are the four resolutions we're voting on as part of the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, so Director Moore, would you like to go ahead and speak to six two nine one, which was pulled from the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, six two nine one is regarding sort of revisions to the um, charter for the Bond Accountability Committee. And um, I had, I had a couple of questions which have been answered. Um, and I have um, suggestions for two changes, um, which I hope are relatively minor, and I think they will uh, simply uh, sort of memorialize current practice. Um, but I think it might be important to um, to make sure that they're in the charter for future reference. Um, the first one is, both of them are on page two of the charter. Uh, the first one is um, the section in the middle of the page, um, the, the section begins, additionally, the committee may provide feedback and/or advice to the board on one or more of the following topics. And there's a list. And I would suggest adding um, annual performance audit work plan to the list. Um, and my understanding is that um, the BAC has been regularly doing that. Um, so I, it, this would just be adding um, adding this piece to uh, to the list to conform with current practice. Um, the second suggestion that I would have um, is in the next section, uh, which talks about uh, the BAC's role in reviewing future bond planning. And it currently reads, the committee will also review future bond planning processes and materials and provide advice as requested by the board, to the board on, and then there are two, two bullet points there. Um, I would suggest changing that to read, the committee will also review future bond planning processes and materials and provide advice to the board prior to the final elaboration of the bond package on, and then the bullet points.
And would that be a proposed bond package? Because it would be under.
It, it, yes, this is under the future bond planning. And I'm, I'm open to copy editing of the, of that sentence. But um, I think it's important to, the, my rationale for making a suggestion is that um, I think, I think the, I think future boards in their planning for future bonds um, should definitely take advantage of the expertise in the Bond Advice, um, Accountability Committee. And um, and I would suggest that it, the, the current wording suggests that it's just optional. And I think it ought to be um, a regular practice.
Yeah. Um, thanks for the amendment. I, I, I agree with the um, uh, the, the rationale behind it. But you say, uh, before elaboration of the bond, I, I'm just curious what that means.
Um, well, um, I was, I was puzzling over the language, actually. Um, thinking back to how we, uh, how we developed the uh, the 2020 bond, um, over the course of months, um, there was a, a kind of constant evolving elaboration of a bond package. Um, and in the final couple of weeks, it became, you know, much more intense and things moved a lot quicker. Um.
How about, um?
And I don't know, I, I don't know at what point in that process, um, the BAC would most usefully kind of provide advice.
I, I guess, let me just, let me, I, I'm, I'm just concerned about elaboration feels like an imprecise word, so it's not clear. But I mean, can, can we just say be prior to referral of the bond? And that's a formal act that the board takes, and it would essentially be saying, you know, we need that, we need the BAC's advice. Um, obviously, some boards may want that advice earlier than that. I'm just, I'm puzzling a little bit with, um, you know, we have to tie it to some specific action, and, and I, elaboration could be, could be anytime, right? So.
Could it be?
Yeah, okay, so.
It, it's really.
Well. Uh, um, but let me just say, um, the first version I wrote for myself of this revision said before referral of the bond, um, I, I taped it to the referral. Um, as I was thinking about it, uh, it occurred to me that um, once you get to the point of referral, it's pretty much a done deal. Um, and I think it would be, it's pretty late in the game to be getting advice from uh, from the BAC. Um, so I, I mean, I could, I could certainly live with um, pegging it to the referral. Um, but my thinking, I, I mean, I, I went back and forth on.
Oh, Director Moore, Director Moore, Director DePasso, and Director Scott, um, I'm wondering if this is something we can um, sort of suspend at this meeting and have the three of you do some talking through and working on, and return with um, some amendments to the charter at our next meeting. Does that, how, how would that work as far as a process piece for, for where we?
Yeah, I mean, it, it works for me. And, and again, I, Rita, I wanna be really clear, I, I fully support this. I think this is exactly what the board needs to do. I just, I'm worried about, about, and, and it is hard, absent referral, which is the formal step, it's, it's hard to sort of peg it to, you know, is it when we first have an inkling of a bond, you know, two years before we do it? Is it when we start doing community engagement? Is it when we start talking seriously about it? So that's my only concern. Um, and I think if, if, if it can wait two weeks, I'm, I'm happy to put our heads together.
Can we just double check? Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. Um, I guess my only concern would be, is there, i- is there some reason why we need to pass this tonight? Is, is there some drop deadline that we're looking at, or?
Not, no, there, there really isn't, I mean, we, this, this work has been in process for some time. Um, I think the sooner the better, it'd be nice to get this codified. But two weeks isn't gonna hurt the process, that, I mean, the consideration of the charter um, edits has been months in the, in the making, so two weeks is.
Yeah, I'll ask the three of you to work together on that and uh, to coordinate with our um, board manager, uh, Rosanne Powell, to sort of um, work on some revisions and get that out to the rest of the board.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Director Moore, for bringing that up by completely supportive of those edits.
Yeah.
Can I make one request of um, of the work group? Um, I, I'm supportive of the language. Um, when you come back, will you have, uh, please run it by the co-chairs of the BAC? Just so that we know that they're agreeing to whatever it is that is being added. Um, it just will make a nice package.
Great.
Um, Karen, Larry, can I ask a point of clarification? Um, the consent agenda, you, you noted went to, went through six two nine five, but in our consent agenda and board book, it, it says resolution six two eight eight to six two nine one. I just wanna be really clear, um, what the consent agenda was.
My consent agenda goes through six two nine five.
Okay, I'm just, I'm reading off the board book, it, it says uh, consent agenda resolution six two eight eight through six two nine one.
Director Scott, hit refresh, I noted that as we started this conversation and, and fixed it. So the resolution was included in the sub list, but it wasn't listed at the top, and so I, it should be updated now.
As soon as I hit refresh, there it was. Thank you, Karen.
But thank you for double checking those, those kinds of details are super important. So, so thank you for drawing that to our attention, Director Scott. Okay, so um, we will come back to this matter of the BAC. Um, and so that uh, finishes our work with the consent agenda for this meeting. Um, and we turn now to our student and public comment. Before we begin, I would like to review our guidelines for comment. The board thanks to the community for taking the time to attend this meeting, uh, to wait for us to get to this point um, and to provide your comments. Public input informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. And our responsibility as a board is to actively listen and know that um, many of our board members take notes. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email those to publiccomment@pps.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound after three minutes, which means it is time to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, we have Suzie Bartley up first.
Hello. Shall I begin? Okay, hey, just to be clear, my name is Susan Angalada-Bartley. Greetings, School Board Superintendent, stating facts. COVID rates are currently on the rise, with more younger people experiencing hospitalization. The B-17 variant, which is more contagious, is now the dominant variant. Latin American people in Oregon have contracted COVID at a rate double their population. Fellow educators and concerned community members have approached PPS regarding buildings being unable to meet CDC guidelines, especially those in majority non-white schools. We have sent correspondence to PPS officials and the school board. We have rallied outside the district office, where students, community members, and educators from impacted communities who are warned you about concerns. Community organizations have, according to news sources, blasted the state for failing to provide vaccines for the Latin American community. It's on the public record, you have been informed. Mr. Guerrero, why are you refusing to speak up on this matter? Why do you neglect to directly address the needs of multiple communities? Why do you spend your time walking from school to school with Governor Kate Brown, who we know is also clearly warned, but ignores and downplays the danger to this community and the inequities in the buildings? School Board, why do you support Guadalupe? School Board, why do you support Guadalupe in his mission to ignore the needs and demands of members of this community who continue to speak out on public record? I give the rest of my time to community member and Prime Minister of the Oregon Brown Berets and Executive Director of Fuerza Oregon Advocacy Association, Carla Patricia Lengua Cruz.
Hi, good evening, everybody. School Board and Superintendent. I've grown to appreciate this time. I just want to state that, you know, Guadalupe, Guerrero, this is directly to you. Just want to say how, uh, how disappointed we are in the community. Uh, you know, the community has spoken, and this is School Board. The community has spoken. They've, they've mentioned and they've written and the professionals that are here in the community, the teachers that are taking care of our kids have spoken. The facts are already been listed. This virus is something that is very delicate and has already affected a lot of community homes. Our community as, as Latinx and as Hispanic community, we need your protection. We need you to, to decide the right decisions that we're asking you to do. Who knows better than the peoples, who knows better than the parents of the children, of the youth that are attending this school? I just want to state that if things do not change, there is going to be public calling outs. There will be protests. There is going to be a different view than what is happening today. We've seen this in other community sections yesterday. What happened to the, to, to, in the school district in Beaverton, there was a protest. The community is not going to stand down anymore. We need your help. We need you to make these decisions to do the right thing for what we're asking. This isn't any more decisions that are just going to please the governor and, and individuals that are not here living in these communities. We will not tolerate any more deaths. We don't want to tolerate any more people getting sick. And only because, and all, all I want to say is, is that if there is no risks in anything, why are we all here in a Zoom meeting?
Thank you.
Why are we in person dealing with these situations? Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, is there further public comment tonight?
Yes, we have David Ortiz.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Ortiz, um, O R T I Z. I was born and raised in North Portland and I am a graduate from Roosevelt High School where I now teach. Thank you, thank you for your time. I'm here to share demands, uh, demands that were written by our Asian Student Group at Roosevelt High School. Demand number one, we demand to see an action plan from Roosevelt with details of what adults will do in response to different harmful scenarios against Asian and Asian American students, including but not limited to verbal assault, physical assault and social interactions or media targeting Asian and Asian American students at our school. This includes specific consequences, procedures and policy ideas that have been created by the admin. A timeline of action steps and implementation needs to be completed and ready to share with ASG by the deadline, March thirty first, and ready to actively implement by April ninth. Demand number two, we do not want the students to do your job. If you plan to be uh, allies to us, you have to be the ones who take active and specific steps towards support, not passing it back to us and asking us what we want you to do. Do not try to suggest solutions to our labor and pain and instead do your own work. Demand three, we want admin and staff to educate themselves on the model minority myth, oppression Olympics and belittling of Asian American people, especially during these times. Send an all staff email to faculty at Roosevelt to do the same. The admin must decide to either create their own page, assignment, example canvas to Google Classroom for teachers, or pay a trained Asian or slash Asian American supervisor and committee member to create the assignment for all admin and staff to participate in. This research and self educating assignment needs to show evidence of completion to ASG by the deadline. Demand number four, we want admin and staff to call out anything immediately instead of being passive and act, and acting as bystanders. The policy of safety for students in school are severely lacking in safety itself. It needs to be acknowledged that safety is not only physical, it is also the emotional mental state of the whole community at Roosevelt. These demands will be shared again. And, and up next, I want to share some context for these, for these demands. Asian and Asian American students have been targets of Asian, of hate and speech and discrimination throughout the history of this country. These incidents have been on the rise during this pandemic, both nationally and in our community. The rise of hate in addition to the racism students at Roosevelt High School felt in the building pre-pandemic prompted Asians and Asian American students and advisors to come together to create the Asian Studying Group in an effort to build community and solidarity. In the wake of the murderers in Atlanta, the ASG put forth a list of demands to our administrators in an effort to ensure their safety and building and in our, in the community. Next, I want to uh, uh, add a little bit as to why I am here, along with my community member. ASG has asked for support and amplifying their demands even further, district wide. We are here to share those demands with you tonight. Students have all been done so much work and advocate for their safety. No student should need to do this. We are amplifying ASG voices as a form of direct action and because the words of our students have so much power. We need you to hear them and take action.
Thank you for your speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, and thank your students.
Good, Larry, can I ask Mr. Ortiz, can you um, send, if you have a written copy of your testimony to um, Roseanne Powell, who can get it to the, to the board?
I, I would love that as well.
Who was the second person?
We show, they pass.
Sorry, if it's to Roseanne, she'll get it to all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there further public comment tonight?
Yes, with Kira Assay.
Hi, my name is Kira Assay. My last name is A S Y. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I also work at Roosevelt High School and came here in partnership with um, Mr. Ortiz. Um, I'm going to reread the demands. We will, we will make sure you get a copy. I ask that you let them sink in, that you hear the voices and the urgency of the individual students who came together collectively to make these demands. Demand number one, we demand to see an action plan from Roosevelt with details of what adults will do in response to different harmful scenarios against Asian and Asian American students, including but not limited to verbal assault, physical assault and social interactions or media targeting Asian and Asian American students at our school. This includes specific consequences, procedures and policy ideas that have been created by the admin. A timeline of action steps and implementation needs to be completed and ready to share with ASG by the deadline, March thirty first and ready to actively implement by April ninth. Demand number two, we do not want the students to do your job. If you plan to be allies to us, you have to be the ones who take active and specific steps towards support, not passing it back to us and asking us what we want you to do. Do not try to suggest solutions to our labor and pain and instead do your own work. Demand number three, we want admin and staff to educate themselves on the model minority myth, oppression Olympics and belittling of Asian and Asian American people, especially during these times. Send an all staff email to faculty at Roosevelt to do the same. The admin must decide to either create their own page or assignment, i.e. canvas or Google Classroom assign, assignment for teachers or pay a trained Asian or Asian American supervisor and community member to create the assignment for all admin and staff to participate in. This research and self educating assignment need to show evidence of completion to ASG by the deadline. Demand number four, we want admin and staff to call out anything immediately instead of being passive and acting as a bystander. The policies of safety for students in school are severely lacking in safety itself. And it needs to be acknowledged that safety is not only physical, it is also the emotional and mental state of the whole community of Roosevelt. We have an ask of the district. The administrators in our building has, have responded to these demands and ASG has shared feedback that it has not been enough. These demands are the truths of the ASG students at Roosevelt High School, but we can imagine that the feeling of lack of safety for the wider Asian and Asian American community in PPS is also true. The district sent out a message of solidarity, but this too is not enough. How is the district modeling the values of racial equity and social justice? Every staff member in PPS holds a position of power. What is the district doing to ensure that its staff are trained to recognize the ways in which systemic racism is inherent within the educational institution of PPS? To actively dismantle the systems that don't serve students? To proactively create structures and systems of safety for students? And to respond in a culturally competent manner when harm occurs? The district needs to do better. It is not a matter of lack of clarity, it's lack of action. Student safety is community safety. When our community is hurting, we all hurt. And Lakesh, thank you.
Thank you. We have Bayang Yu.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Bayang Yu, YU, he/him, PPS teacher and parent. Historically underserved or historically ignored? According to public data, it is our black and brown schools that have less than fifty percent of its students returning to in-person. Meanwhile, our wealthy white communities have over seventy-five percent of its students returning to buildings. Could this be because white Portland has better access to COVID tests, vaccinations and healthcare? But we all know these things, right? So I don't say historically underserved. I say historically ignored. Because according to the RSSL, there are no amount of COVID cases within a school that would cause it to shut down. We have at least eighteen different buildings in PPS with a COVID outbreak. Why am I tracking this down from screenshots of administrative emails sent by colleagues across PPS? Why is there no PPS centralized place for communities to track COVID? Other districts are doing this work. There are no asymptomatic tests or even adequate symptomatic tests being administered right now. We have entire schools that have only one student eligible to take a COVID test. The district provided rapid tests are performative. Why are they optional? When we take field trips, we are required to get permission first. Why wasn't the same thing done for COVID tests before returning to buildings? We don't even ask families to fill out a pre-entry COVID screening before bringing their kids to school. And yes, other districts are doing this. So to the people that say COVID does not spread in schools, to the leadership that is still meeting virtually while communities are back in person, I say, look at the variance and all these safety holes in PPS. Board members, what we are witnessing right now in history is the normalization of COVID in schools. Even as Oregon has the fastest growing rates of COVID infection in the nation. Do not blame it on the RSSL. Do not allow this narrative. Because if we aren't about changing this, then we are all complicit in COVID's white supremacy culture. And who are we to tell our communities who have lost loved ones to COVID that nothing can be done? Who are we to tell those with lifelong COVID complications that their lives don't matter? It's not monolithic. There are still black and brown families on both sides of the CDL and in-person camps. But if we can't protect them, then why are buildings open at all?
Thank you. We have Teresa Botman.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Teresa Botman, T E R E Z A B O T T M A N, pronouns she/her. I'm an educator and a parent of three PPS students and I'm here because I'm extremely concerned about the alarming rise in COVID infections and the lack of safety protocols and transparency regarding COVID nineteen cases in our schools. School buildings should not be open right now. We are conflating lack of testing and contact tracing with lack of spread, acting as if schools had a magical dome of immunity surrounding them or the coronavirus stopped at the doors because of its phobia of hand sanitizer and school employees with badges and clipboards. This is the classic logical fallacy called appeal to ignorance, where absence of evidence is taken to be evidence of absence. It is ethically and morally appalling to continue with this hazardous, life-threatening operation. Every day, we are hearing through the break line of uh, new notifications to families and staff of COVID infections in PPS schools. We know that the number of infected people who show up in school is proportional to the spread in the community, which is rising at the fastest rate in the nation here in Oregon. It is time, PPS leadership said no to special interests and yes to protecting our students and most vulnerable families by shutting down in-person learning in the height of the pandemic. Effective leadership is not about compliance. Leaders on the right side of history lead with courage and against the grain because to them, there's no such concept as a throwaway person. Those with privilege have dehumanized the impact of this pandemic to insulate themselves from being implicated in causing human death and suffering by calling those who fall sick cases. How many children are you willing to sacrifice to prop up the state's economy? The district is operating on truthiness while what students and families deserve is the truth. It is time to mandate a full return to CDL. And when and only when our numbers are down, fall or later, we need the following three Ts. Testing, temp checks and transparency, because according to a Canadian study that was published this month, thirty-five percent of infected children ages zero to nine are asymptomatic. We need a system of regular mandatory asymptomatic testing for all students, just like LA Unified is doing. We need temp checks at the door because fever is the most common uh, symptom for children and transparent communication systems such as a dashboard that's updated daily with COVID cases per school, multilingual and available to the public. If we made asymptomatic testing a priority, we would likely find the same thing as a study out of Omaha, Nebraska schools where they conducted asymptomatic testing, came out this month. They found infection rates were six times higher for students and concluded that as many as nine in ten student COVID cases may be missed by, by traditional reporting. Though risk of death is not as high for pediatric patients, research shows that a sizable portion end up in hospitals and intensive care. We also know that thirty-four percent of those who survive COVID suffer from long-term neurological and psychiatric disorders. Increasingly, children are becoming long haulers. We must say no more and do what's right. We move back to CDL now. And once we return to schools, when it's safer, when it's safe, uh, at least, not earlier than the fall, we need testing, temp checks and transparency. We deserve nothing less from your leadership.
Thank you. We have Greg Myers.
Baby, there we are. I can say it too. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, great. That must be the catchphrase of the nineteen, two hundred and twenty. Uh, good evening Superintendent Guerrero, uh, good evening board members. Um, thank you for the time. My name is Greg Myers. I am a union officer for the SEIU Local one forty. I am also the head of, head custodian of Jackson Middle School. Uh, I've been a custodian for Portland Public, head custodian for Portland Public Schools for fifteen years. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to make an investment to keep our schools safe and clean and to ask you for equity for our nutrition service workers. We appreciate that the district agreed to provide a pandemic recognition payment for our nutrition service workers, acknowledging their dedication and their central role they play in ensuring a healthy and safe school environment. This was an important step in the direction of providing true equity for all PPS employees. The next step to uh, include nutrition services in the general fund budget so as to prove, provide the predominantly female workforce an actual living wage, uh, a wage that will attract and retain new employees who would like to make this a career. Uh, it is a career job. It used to be, at least, it was a career job for, for many people. Uh, true equity often requires structural change. By investing general fund dollars, PPS can lift the standards for uh, this historically undervalued group. I'm also here to ask the district to invest in the future of our buildings and facilities by providing uh, realistic budgeting to hire and retain more union custodians. Uh, after years of understaffing, we have reached a crossroad where we need to decide, do we want to hire and maintain a custodial staff to protect the multimillion dollar trust our community has put on us? Or do we continue down the path we've been following for the last fifteen years and watch the nice new shiny schools become, the catchphrase moderately dingy? Uh, our union coalition is working together to ensure the district prioritizes the health and safety of student and the hardworking PPS staff. So hopefully, the return to in-person instruction will be successful. Which, I'm sounding like I'm the only one that's saying that tonight. Finally, I would like to thank every nutrition service and transportation employee who has worked the front lines for PPS during this pandemic. For the last year, these folks have been the face of the Portland Public Schools. They've generated goodwill by handing out food to anyone who is in need. They did this vaccineless, in the rain, in the freezing cold, and during forest fires that one point caused Portland to have the worst air quality in the world. And they did it with nothing more than a one-sided pop-up tent, a mask, and a pair of disposable gloves. These are the PPS employees who actually risked their lives for the community. And they deserve a personal thank you from each and every one of us. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Redd, do you have any more testimony tonight?
No, that concludes our testimony.
I once again want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. I know that it's not always easy to come and speak before the board, so really appreciate the public input we've received tonight. I think that now is a good moment for us to take a brief break as a school board. So we are going to be back in five minutes at seven twenty and will resume at seven twenty-five. Thanks, everyone. We are going to go ahead and get started with our next item, which is the report from our student rep. Now Nathaniel, I think is still on break, so as soon as Nathaniel returns to the screen, we will go ahead and begin with our student representatives' report.
Hi, I think my wifi be, can you hear me, see me?
Um, I, it might be my wifi. Go ahead Nathaniel.
Yes, no. Hello?
It, it sounds like the, the
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we just heard that. Thank you.
Can you see me and hear me now? I think the wifi is glitching.
You know.
Okay, hopefully this works. If it cuts out, then just stop me. I can try again. All right, um, my report tonight will be fairly brief. To begin with, I would like to provide an update on the PPS Student Summit. The DSC has continued planning the summit since I spoke of it a handful of meetings ago. We have finalized our breakout room offerings as well as begun our general outreach efforts. As I believe I noted in that past meeting, we, we will provide a link to the summit to all members of SLT, ELT, and the board once we are closer to the event. For any PPS students who are interested in attending, I encourage you to go to the QR code displayed on the poster or to the link right below it. I'm going to leave this up on the screen for a couple of seconds. And a copy of this poster can be found on the DSC's Google Drive that is available on a link on our webpage. So I very much encourage all PPS students to attend that. I'm looking forward to it. It again is on the twenty-second of May and it will be virtual over Zoom. Where are all my notes? All right, and I'd also like to note that PPS does have an election coming up. On May eighteenth, voters will decide who the next board members are from zones five, six, and, no, four, five, and six. As it so happens, today is the voter registration deadline. So if you are eighteen or older but have not yet registered, please do so by going to OregonVotes.gov before midnight tonight and remember to turn in your ballots by the eighteenth. Personally, this is the first election in which I've been allowed to vote, something which I'm very much looking forward to. Uh, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you Nathaniel. I'm going to go ahead and tweet out right now that OregonVotes.gov registration link. So we can get everybody registered for this election that's coming up on May eighteenth. All right, Superintendent Guerrero, I know you have a report for us tonight as well.
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, good evening, Directors. Buenos tardes to everyone out there and toda la comunidad for watching this meeting livestream from home. I wanted to start off perhaps on a serious somber note here. I do want to start with an acknowledgement of the events last week in Minnesota. As I shared with all staff last week, this verdict that was handed down in Minneapolis brings a number of emotions up that we'll need to keep processing for for some time. While I feel some sense of relief for the display of accountability for this case, I too still yearn for for true justice when our systems and communities reflect our values, that Black Lives Matter. Last week also served as another reminder of the active role our students and young people across the country play in leading long overdue national reckoning on racial justice. Supporting our students includes supporting one another. We are collectively experiencing so many challenges this year. To our black educators, administrators, staff, students, families, and partners, please know that you are seen and appreciated. I hope that one day we will look back last year's, at last week's verdict as another turning point and reflection point in our nation's progress towards justice. Our PPS graduate portrait envisions us to support our students to become compassionate, critical thinkers who are able to collaborate and solve problems and lead a more socially just world. We still have work to do. I ask that we all continue to stand shoulder to shoulder and remain committed to dismantling anti-black racism and oppression in our own school system, that we collectively continue to fight for racial justice. And that together, we work every day to create the conditions so that every student, particularly our students of color thrive. And so much of that work to create the conditions so that every student thrives is carried out every day by our teachers and school administrators. And we heard at the top of the meeting from our directors recognizing next week's PPS Teacher and School Administrator Appreciation Week coming up. This past year, and I'll add my testimony here, provides proof of the incredible commitment and dedication of our educators, school and district administrators. They've, it's been particularly true, the statement, and we've said it before. It, it's offered challenges and unique circumstances. There's not a PD for it. There's no degree that prepares you for it. Could have prepared our educators and administrators for. But time and time again, over the last thirteen months, they've come through for our students. And we've seen the the outcome of that in the last couple of weeks. Initially pivoting to distance learning, almost overnight it seemed, finding a way to maintain connection with our students and a continuity of learning. And then planning and preparing for ultimately offering the option and the choice to our families as we reopen to in-person instruction. So I too ask that everyone in our community join us in celebrating, honoring, and thanking our teachers and and school administrators. Please look for stories and spotlight pieces across all our social media platforms in the coming week as we celebrate our teachers and administrators. So speaking of reopening for hybrid instruction, we've now welcomed all in-person cohorts at all grade levels. This has been a significant undertaking, to say the least. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, after we reopened for our youngest scholars, things have continued to go remarkably smoothly. I also want to thank Directors for helping us to welcome students and staff back to their respective schools and for your support in getting us to this point. And with hybrid now in full operation across the district, you will notice we're switching gears and starting with tonight's regular meeting agenda, moving away from reopening updates because now we've reopened. And now you're going to start to hear updates about summer programming. And you're going to start to get a first dose of information there and how summer programming plans fit into our overall learning acceleration plans moving forward. But I do want to offer a slide here and I'll try to channel Dr. Russ Brown a little bit here. We continue to track daily and weekly health metrics. Those are publicly posted and available by OHA. You can find a listing of every school in the state of Oregon and any cases if they're experiencing them. We'll, we'll make sure that link is on our own website for those that are curious where where those instances are happening. So ultimately, our ability to remain open for hybrid and fully open this fall is of course dependent on our community metrics and guidance from the Oregon Health Authority and Oregon Department of Education. You can see from the illustration here, things, things are starting to to pick up again in the way of the rate of cases per hundred thousand. I think everybody's aware of that and has, is, is watching the news reports. And, and so hopefully, things will, will start to head the other direction and improve. But as we do welcome students back to in-person learning, as we plan the summer and look forward to the fall, as well as the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar, which is also on this evening's agenda back to Directors for a vote. We're getting closer and closer to reestablishing familiarity and, and certain routines, especially traditions here at PPS. I say this knowing that as a larger community, we're, we're not still done in dealing with and remaining healthy and safe in regards to COVID nineteen. But I am pleased that we continue to reintroduce in-person learning environments and gradually other student opportunities, as we've seen with athletics and arts. One of our most cherished traditions, of course, is high school graduation. So I'm really pleased to share that we plan to host graduations for all comprehensive high schools at Providence Park this June. Holding commencement ceremonies outdoors will allow us to welcome graduates and their families to be together for this important day. Providence Park is a historical gem and of course known worldwide for the magic that is the timbers and the thorns. It's a particularly appropriate location to to celebrate our graduates and helps to support a health and safe event. Our plans, of course, are dependent on COVID metrics. And I should mention that while we will all be together at Providence Park, we'll, we'll continue to observe very tightly all those public health best practices, including physical distancing within the whole stadium. Our alternative programs have chosen a more personalized, smaller scale ceremony as they, as they have customarily done to uphold some of their traditions as well. Our high school seniors and their families should expect school specific details coming in the coming week. So please look for that. A centralized webpage will also go live later this week. So we're really excited to see our seniors and their families downtown in Portland in June, celebrating this really important milestone. And if anybody's up for a game of four square, you can find our students out on the schoolyard. So that concludes my report for this evening, Directors. Thank you.
Thank you so much Superintendent Guerrero. We turn now to our committee reports. And so we do these in alphabetical order, so I'm going to start with the Audit Committee and Director Brim Edwards.
We haven't met since the last time we had a board meeting, so there's no Audit Committee update.
Thank you. At School Improvement Bond Committee, Director DePass.
Thank you. Yeah, we met on April, the School Improvement Bond Committee met on April fifteenth and had a full agenda. We talked, discussed updates on school modernization and the long-range facility plan. We had an excellent and the long-range facility plan. We had an excellent presentation from a team of uh, people whose names I I I wish I would have um, remembered. I wish I could remember. That talked about uh, spatial justice and um, was fascinating. Um, we also reviewed the uh, proposed BAC Charter that we discussed earlier tonight. Um, thank you again to Director Moore for uh, making those additions that'll um, strengthen and improve that charter. And we meet again on May twenty-seventh at four-thirty.
Excellent. Director Moore, do you have a report for us from the CBRC?
Yes, the CDSD met uh, on uh, April fifteenth and got a um, a- and the committee kind of got an overview of the budget process and talked about how they're going to approach um, their reporting to us about uh, their analysis and uh, of the budget that we're looking at. Um, they are meeting on Thursday uh, to begin discussions that will culminate in the reports that they're gonna deliver to us. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, next we have, I've lost my place, so of course, don't know what's next alphabetically. Okay, there we are. Uh, Director Konstam, Charter and Alternative Programs.
Thank you. We met last week. Uh, we had a great out update from our uh, CBO Alternative Schools on return to hybrid learning, which was great, and um, we also uh, staff informed us about the response to the request for proposals for um, CBOs for this next contract cycle, so um, there were a lot of interesting ideas and innovations that came forward in that process, and for the most part, we have um, our same group of organizations that have been providing those services that want to continue providing those services. I think we have one new um, organization in the mix. And um, then we had just a really important conversation pegged to the budget process um, about issues that our um, CBO partners have been raising around um, equity in our budgeting process. So really trying to take a student-centered approach in looking at uh, what do these kids need, regardless of the mechanism through which they're being served. And I intend to um, keep talking about this in our budget proposal. Um, they have asked for, in addition to the pass-through rate that they get on a per-student basis, um, which is currently eighty percent. Um, so not only was that a really important discussion, but we had great participation. We had um, most of the leaders of our contract, of our con- our community-based alternative programs there in the conversation. And so they just talked about, you know, how they do what they do with what they've got and what they actually need. And it was really great to hear from them directly, and also in that conversation, we uh, revisited just the deep concerns that I feel um, around the trauma that their school communities are experiencing with this epidemic of gun violence, and uh, talked a little bit about what um, what supports are being made available to them and what more we can do and what they're doing on the street to support their kids and families. So it is um, some of the leaders of our contracted alternative schools that are that are leading that conversation in Portland right now and speaking up for the youth who are most impacted, because they're our kids. And there is um, some kind of tragedy in these communities on a weekly basis. Um, and it's um, I'm grateful for the leadership of of these people, but um, we really need to, we really need as an organization to examine what we, what more we can do to push others, city leadership, county leadership, and to um, dig in our own resources for these kids and families, because it's it's a really, really traumatic situation that we've got going on in our streets right now. So that's what we talked about, and we, everybody was grateful for the um, the venue to have those conversations.
First question, Director Konstam, on tonight's um, consent agenda, there was the contract for Rosemary Anderson for a, it's a equity allocation uh, for the Culon Air Arts CTE project and facility. Was that part of the conversation about flow-through of equity funds? Or was that a something separate and complete from the committee's work and the committee's discussion about equity funding?
We changed our formula to include CBOs um, in uh, to make CBOs eligible eligible for our equity grants. Um, I don't know if Karina's on here, but I think that was two years ago that we made that switch, maybe three years ago, and they did speak to how incredibly grateful they are for that. I just was talking with someone today at Helensville View High School who brought that up out of the blue and said that those equity funds enabled them to buy two vans that they use to take kids um, to uh, interviews and internships and um, life experiences through their CTE program and job and job opportunities, connect them with job opportunities. So um, that, what you saw, Julia, is a result of our policy decision of a few years back to um, include them in our equity uh, funds distribution.
Great, thank you. Then just my other question is, was there any discussion about the Opal Charter? Um, given that um, the this school has decided to discontinue in what we do with that charter?
Yep, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, we just heard from um, enrollment and transfer and uh, about how we're doing in terms of really amazing customer service for each of those families as they try to situate themselves in a new, new school um, new school community for next year, so um, they uh, they uh, held the lottery process open. Uh, I think about half the families participated in the lottery process. Others are uh, choosing their neighborhood schools. Um, we didn't talk about the charter. It's my understanding that we don't need to do anything at the moment regarding their charter. Um, we just talked about how are the kids doing, and are we taking care of them now that they've had this um, abrupt change?
Thank you.
Director Scott, what report do we have from the Intergovernmental Committee?
Uh, we have not met since the last um, board meeting, so I'll just note that we have a Intergovernmental Committee meeting on May thirteenth.
Thank you. Uh, Director Moore, uh, what uh, do we have from the Policy Committee?
Policy Committee met yesterday um, after a little hiatus. Uh, we talked about um, a number of policies, the responsible use of technology, climate crisis response policies, uh, the complaint policy, and we got an introduction to um, some changes that we're going to have to be looking at um, in kind of a suite of policies um, related to um, harassment, sexual hara- especially sexual harassment um, that will be responsive to some statutory changes that have been made. Um, and w- will be all of, at at that, our next meeting on May tenth will be um, I think revisiting all of the above-named policies.
Thank you.
Can I ask a really quick question? Dr. Moore, um, is the um, Foundation, School Foundation policy still on your committee's agenda for this year?
Um, it is in principle, um, but everything had to be put on hold um, a couple of months ago. Um, what I don't know is whether staff are going to have the capacity to uh, prepare anything for the committee's consideration um, before this this iteration of the Policy Committee goes out of business as of June thirtieth. Um, so it's, it's theoretically still on the work plan. Um, so it's going to have to be a sort of um, w- we'll see, but we'll see if we can, if we have time to bring it up.
Okay, thanks. No, and that's completely understandable, given everything that's going on. I I I would, I would personally be interested even, even if it gets delayed, that we still have a plan for when we will revisit that, um, even if it's after um, June thirtieth and and next year's Policy Committee. It's something I I'd like to make sure it stays on the on the, on the board's radar uh, in some form.
Absolutely, I I agree with that. We have lots of parents that are also very interested in following the the conversation, or the, maybe the lack of conversation, but I'm, I'd be very interested in keeping that uh, agenda item alive.
There's actually a great draft that the community has put together that seems ready at least have a discussion about, if at least get started.
Well, I'm of the opinion that um, wh- whatever happens uh, between now and June thirtieth, um, I think, I think there's more than enough work to make the Policy Committee a essentially a twelve-month operation. Um, eh, so I I would recommend that um, the, a, a new Policy Committee um, take up the work starting in the summer, um, or at least start really planning the next year's work in the summer. Uh, because it's um, takes a long time to go through these policies. It um, it's uh, it's, it, it has to be exacting work, so it takes a long time. Um, so I would highly recommend that um, the next board um, start thinking about the committees as of July one.
Thank you, Director Moore, for all of your work on the Policy Committee. I know it's a lot, and I know that we'll keep that uh, enough of us are paying attention to that foundation policy, so we'll make sure that if if we're not able to work through it this cycle, that we'll, we'll have it there. Um, we're gonna move on to the Rose Quarter. Director Bailey and Director Brem Edwards, what, what do you have on the Rose Quarter for us tonight?
Yeah.
Add one thing to the policy before we move off.
Yeah.
Uh, and just to uh, reemphasize, we're doing a lot more public engagement uh, in policy development, I think, than ever is done before. Um, and I'm worried that that's a bit of a bottleneck considering all the other public engagement that we're doing in lots of different areas. Um, I know, for example, the, the climate policy is um, we're really close to a really good final draft to take out, and it's, it's gonna be a couple of months before uh, we have adequate time to get good public input and support for a final version of that. Um, and when we, we look at everything else going on, um, there, there's a lot out there. So I I think we need to keep that in mind as we go forward in terms of our expectations and our staffing.
And one of the other things out there for us is that Rose Quarter. Um, so Director Brem Edwards, what do you have to share with us about uh, where we are with the Rose Quarter tonight?
Thank you. Um, there was a meeting of the ex- executive steering, or the Executive Advisory Committee, um, yesterday uh, that Courtney Westling and I participated in. Um, and I think the biggest probably um, new development is that uh, ODOT contacted me um, and let me know that they have asked their design um, team to put together an alternative uh, proposal that would um, not move the um, the freeway expansion any closer to Harriet Tubman Middle School, and that instead it would be a shift to the west. And um, so that you know, obviously that gives up two potential options um, that we uh, have, so um, we also reiterated um, our request that we, that the board would like a presentation um, and have an opportunity to ask uh, questions of ODOT and the, the, the beauty of now that they have another option on the table is that they can discuss both of those um, options. In addition, um, we flagged for them that to date they haven't um, provided any sort of um, mitigation or plan for if they moved ahead either with um, the, you know, the what, the, the plan that moves even closer to Harriet Tubman, or the plan to keep it in place, ne- neither of those um, potential designs, do they yet have any mitigation strategies for during the actual construction frage, phase, which would be uh, quite disruptive um, to the school community. Uh, so stay tuned, so they should be coming back to us um, for that. In addition, uh, coming to the board to uh, present on both of those. In addition, um, they, there was the presentation on the um, sort of different options on the highway covers, and for just uh, as a refresh, this was something that the Albino Vision Trust had asked for, um, not just sort of like basic uh, highway covers, but ones that would support development, um, either housing, retail, uh, businesses, uh, industrial on, on top of the covers, and there are now a couple of options, and so those are before us. They've asked for comment, and Director Bailey and um, PPS staff will be involved in that. One of the, one of the proposed covers um, is quite close to BESC, so of course, you know, some impacts um, potentially um, on our administrative uh, building as well. And let's see, um, the last uh, piece is uh, the district has a tentative timeline to work through a, a, a prop- um, the scoping of what it would potentially uh, cost to move the middle school, and also we flagged for the um, Office of uh, Community Engagement, that this will be something that definitely, any discussion about whether the school moves or what the mitigation is, that there'll need to be a conversation with the Harriet Tubman um, school community. So those are all the things that are in in the pipeline. Anything to add, Director Bailey?
Um, so if you could just share with the board uh, when we were contacted with a different scenario and how quickly ODOT asked for our response?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the um, the caps?
S- s- I I'm trying to get a clarification of e- either the caps or the new, new design.
So um, the, the, the freeway covers were unveiled at the meeting yesterday, and essentially they um, asked all the participants to either provide feedback right there at the meeting. The the materials were um, shared at, I think, one o'clock in the afternoon for a three o'clock meeting. Um, some individuals had feedback at the meeting. Um, for those that didn't, um, the request was to get back either with questions or feedback by Fri- this Friday. Um, on the alternative design, um, that came up last week, and um, we were asked to, that they wanted to present that to the committee yesterday. And so that was presented as this will be an option. There, there's obviously no design yet, um, but they're just providing notice that they're asking the team for to potentially provide an alternative dis- um, design. So I don't have a timeline yet when that would, with that alternative design, and there'll be impacts on um, businesses that are on the west side of the freeway, so Harriet Tubman's on the east side, so if they don't move it closer to Harriet Tubman and they move it west, that would have impacts um, on clearly that, you know, the, the um, businesses and property owners on, on the west side. Um, so that's just at the very initial stage.
And I think even the expansion of the freeway will increase the amount of pollution that our students are exposed to, so I think this continues to be a very worrisome development.
Yeah, um, that is a great point, um, that um, and is under dispute because ODOT claims that the, the um, after the expansion, that actually the air quality would be better, um, but won't guarantee that the air quality will be um, of a health, in a healthy range.
Thank you for that, Directors.
Which has never happened before.
In other words, it's really bad now, and it won't get worse. It's really bad now, and it's unhealthy now.
Less worse is um,
Less worse.
Well, and that's, I think, a subject of continued conversation as we talk about um, freeway impacts.
And just uh, just to be in a public process and ask for immediate feedback or feedback within a few days to a, a, a major plan just, just to me is one more example of um, ODOT not listening well to um, the community at large.
There were a lot of individuals at that meeting who echoed those sentiments. Director Bailey?
Well, thank you all for that work, and I know the board will continue to be vigilant um, and to continue to advocate both for the um, impacts on uh, climate change of this proposal and also the direct impacts on our students. Um, we move now to a very exciting agenda topic. Um, oh, first of all, I need to double-check. Are there any other reports or things that board members need to share at this moment?
I'll just briefly share that um, call everyone's attention to um, an email that we sent earlier this week that our dra- uh, draft guidelines from that our dra- uh, draft guidelines from the Council of Great City Schools, uh, four districts on, um, prioritization of the, of the new latest tranche of federal funds. Superintendent Guerrero has participated with a group of superintendents. I've been participating with a group of, um, school board members. So, um, hopefully we'll have, uh, that'll be something that we'll actually use and refer to in our budget process. And Superintendent, I don't know if you want to add anything, um, on that.
Uh, only that, um, larger urban districts realize very quickly with the substantive new resources. Um, you know, there, there's an interest in, uh, spending them wisely, of course, uh, and there's deadlines there. And so why not get everybody together to share their best thinking and sort of provide some, some guidelines around, uh, ways to make some well-rounded investments to support our, our students? So it's very helpful to, to be in those conversations.
And, and I would say from the board perspective, uh, one of our main focuses was just on the accountability aspect and communication with our, with our communities about, um, how we're prioritizing these funds.
And I would check that we did have a board retreat this last, um, Saturday, and we were able to, um, sort of come up with some consensus around a new board leadership election process, um, do some work on our comms protocols, which will join our other protocols, um, and look at our ethic statement as well as get some robust training on guardrails. So many of those items will be ahead of us for voting in the next month. Um, but thanks again to all the, my board colleagues for doing this work on our board self-evaluation and, um, trying to adjust and shift our board culture to align with the best practices as outlined by the Council of Great City Schools. All right, now we get to the exciting part, which is, um, gonna be awesome. Uh, Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce, um, this, uh, item of identifying a new mascot for the Ida B. Wells Barnett High School community?
Well, here we are. Uh, on, on January twenty-sixth, if you recall, uh, directors unanimously approved Resolution sixty-two thirty-five to change the name of Wilson High School to Ida B. Wells Barnett High School. Uh, similar to the process for selecting a new name, uh, for Ida B. Wells Barnett, a committee was formed to identify a mascot that includes students, alumni, community members and staff, uh, and an engagement process led by our students, uh, with support, uh, from our Office of Community Engagement. On March thirtieth, Ida B. Wells Barnett High School, uh, renaming committee submitted a name recommendation for the school mascot after completing the second phase of a student and equity center design process. Uh, school board discussion surfaced questions about Evergreens, uh, as a proposed school mascot for Ida B. Wells Barnett High School and whether this symbol might conjure up painful memories of our country's troubling history. So following the Board of Education meeting, the Ida B. Wells Barnett Mascot Renaming Committee revisited, uh, the mascot recommendation and decided to move in another direction, uh, by moving on to the next strongest mascot recommendation. Uh, after further engagement, including with the leaders of Portland's African-American community and the family of Ida B. Wells Barnett, uh, they've now concluded their process. So, uh, tonight, we are recommending you approve the school community's choice of the Guardians as the new mascot for Ida B. Wells Barnett High School. So, uh, once again, I'd, I'd like to, uh, introduce to the screen, uh, Camille and our esteemed principal, Philippe.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Guerrero, um, esteemed board members. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I will just need a moment to get my screen sharing, uh, up and going. And I'm hoping that at this point you can see, um, my screen. Please let me know if you, if you can't. Um, so again, my name is Philippe Priestich. Uh, I'm the proud principal of Ida B. Wells High School. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to share with you our recommendation of the Guardians as the.
Principal Priestich, I, I just wanted you to know, we can actually, uh, see your notes.
Oh, well, we don't want to do that.
There you go.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to give away anything before you say it.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Director Scott. Thank you. So I'm here this evening to make a formal request that we change the name of our school mascot from Ida B. Wells Trojans to Ida B. Wells Guardians. And as you all know, our committee consists of, uh, remarkable student leaders, uh, as well as committed alumni, uh, staff, community representatives. Our committee members share a broad range of perspectives and experiences. And every major decision that we've made since last summer, uh, actually, our committee made, uh, as a team. That includes the recommendations that, uh, a few of our committee members will be presenting to you this evening. Uh, this evening, uh, we will share with you about the process that we followed to identify our new school mascot, uh, the guiding principles that framed our work. We will share with you, uh, in particular why we decided that Guardians, uh, was a much better choice for our school than the Evergreens. We'll give you a small taste of some of the visual elements that we've developed so far to represent this new mascot. And finally, I'll just give you a bit of a preview of the work that lies ahead for us as a school, um, after this evening, when we hopefully finalize, uh, not just the renaming process and the rebranding process, but actually embark on the, uh, school culture building process. So without further ado, uh, please join me in welcoming, uh, Mr. Martin Osborne.
Uh, th- thank you, Philippe, and good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Osborne, and I am a committee, community representative of Ida B. Wells Barnett High School Renaming Committee. At the very beginning of the high school renaming process, our committee established a set of principles to guide both how we operated as a committee and the process by which we, uh, were to select a name. To that end, we've been striving to work to send, to ensure we center the voices and the perspectives of historically marginalized communities, creating an environment of equity inclusion. We wanted to operate in a manner that provides open communication transparency. This meant maintaining a high level of honesty to ourselves and the community, as well as integrity and the fortitude to stick to the process even when it became uncomfortable. We were holding ourselves accountable to the community to provide a variety of opportunities for community stakeholders to participate, and most importantly, ensure that in spite of all the various stakeholders, we center the voices of the students and let them volunteer, lead, co-lead, discuss, and honor their input throughout the process. And just as a side note, um, our student leaders did an, have been doing an incredible job as committee members, and our success in great measure has been through their energy, perspective, creativity, willingness to question everything and wisdom. Um, as always, we had looked at the renaming process as fitting in with the Portland Public Schools Administrative Directive for School Name Changing. So we needed to make sure that, um, the tenants in our guidelines, um, were, they were incorporated in both our guiding principles and our guidelines. Next slide, please. Uh, I, I like Superintendent Guerrero's, um, uh, introduction. Thank you very much because you covered a lot of the things that, uh, this part of the presentation is just going to touch on. I don't think I have to repeat much of what you said. Um, as noted in your, um, attachments on this discussion, the Resolution sixty-two ninety-three gives a lot of detail as well as, um, Principal Herstix's, um, April twenty-third letter. And I invite you to, to read that for more detail. So I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights of how we came about and, and made a change because it's, it's a very important lesson, I think, for all of us. And it reflects on the process and integrity of what we've been trying to do all along. We obviously had gone through the, uh, process with the community to come up with five finalists. We went back to the community, um, with a forced rank voting process. We came up with the Evergreens. We submitted it. Um, it created some discussion, and I want to thank Director DePass with the support of Director Brim Edwards and Director Scott to just start a discussion about what the potential ramifications of having the Evergreens as a mascot, mascot for the school. That prompted a very important discussion for us immediately after we had our meeting. If we can go to the next slide, please. We, we decided that we would, um, immediately discuss, even though the Evergreens was, um, had a lot to, lot to offer, uh, we decided that we would, um, discuss immediately after the meeting what the ramifications of, of the discussion in, in the board meeting entailed and what that meant to us. Uh, it was a courageous discussion. It was uncomfortable. But I will say that our student leaders and adult leaders on the team, um, we stayed with the guidelines, the principles. We're looking at social equity. We're looking at, it's not enough to have good intentions. We have to measure our impact and our choices and decisions. And even if our initial decision might be readily transparent, accessible and obvious to many members of the community, if there were issues that this brought up that we needed to address for other members of the community, we need to take that on. We use our guiding principles and the process that we set out to continue, then they continue to serve us well in deciding a course of action. Honesty, integrity, transparency, accountability, including typically unheard or marginalized voices. And for our student leaders, their voices were heard as well. We discussed and continue to learn and understand how the depths of certain symbols, no matter how ubiquitous they are to our region, which is one reason we chose the Evergreens, seemingly innocent, a stand of trees, and innocuous Evergreens can have potential for both trauma for people who associate that with other unfortunate symbols that our country has developed over the years, and the opportunity for other members of our community to potentially take that symbol in a negative way as well. It's truly a lesson, a great example of how we must continue to unpack the deep legacy of our country's history to better heal and bring equity to the present and into the future. So we were also thinking about the long term. We wanted to make sure that future students that would matriculate to Ida B. Wells Barnett School, the staff that would work there, the community in which the school resides, would always have the opportunity to be in an environment that's inclusive and would aspire to the, um, the tenants and values of our namesake. So we decided that evening, even after, um, even afterwards, when our principal contacted a descendant of the family who had no problem with the Evergreens, we decided that evening that we could not do something that might potentially harm other students. We changed. We decided we would go in a new direction. We would fall back on our process. We would fall back on our forced ranking system we had in place. We would take out the Evergreens. And we would look again to see which would be the next chosen mascot of our school. And from there, we would continue to vet it with greater sensitivity to the undercurrent or undisclosed potential issues that that mascot might bring up. And luckily, because we had a robust system, because we had courageous students, and we had adults who were willing to, to make the change, even though it really messed up the timeframe for ordering uniforms, put us in a bad place with some members of the community who are wondering why we're changing, it was the right thing to do. And I'd like to say that, um, for us, um, we feel really good about the process. We feel good about how we handled the information that we received and how we addressed it and how we processed it and how we used it to do the good work that our committee set out to do. And with that, we made a change to the Guardians. And now I'd like to turn it over to the next member of our committee to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. So, uh, esteemed board members, um, next you will hear a little bit about how the Guardians aligns with our school values and why we think, uh, this is, uh, a wonderful way to honor our namesake. Um, we'll tell you a little bit more about the extended community engagement that Martin alluded to, uh, and then we'll give you a little bit of a preview of what Guardians, um, mascot, how it will be represented. Uh, so without further ado, joining us from Sweden, one of our, uh, esteemed alums, Narina McLeve.
Philippe, we, uh, can't hear. You may need to turn on the original sound for the video. Let's see. Those who are smarter in Zoom may know there's, there's an easy trick to this, but I don't actually know what it is.
If you go down to the share button at the bottom.
Hello, everyone. So I'd like to just talk a little bit about why Guardians became a finalist for Ida B. Wells High School. And I think we realized quite quickly, um, after we arrived at Guardians, that Guardians really aligned with what we were trying to promote, what we are trying to promote. And especially with who Ida B. Wells was. Um, uh, this was a woman who devoted her life to promoting and protecting justice, truth and human dignity. She gave voice to those who were silenced, and she defended those that were mistreated. She used the power of writing and public speaking to shed light on the ugly truth of racism. And at the end of the day, she was a true guardian of democracy and social justice. And, uh, as, as Ida B. Wells High School Guardians, we will work to promote her legacy and to foster her lasting message of determination, tolerance, tolerance among students, families and staff. And Guardians will be a facet of that. And to put a little more of a concrete definition on Guardians, um, this is someone who protects, a person who takes care of one another. And it might look like a custodian, a steward, a caretaker, a champion, a defender. Um, at the end of the day, the Guardians is truly a mascot that represents all the ideals we're looking for. Thank you.
Oops. Let's go to the next slide. Uh, Norma, do you want to tell us a little bit about some of these visual representations?
Uh, good evening. My name is Norma Hamilton. I'm going to talk to you about your, um, about the visual elements of our mascot. This is not the final product, but the work in progress of our mascot. This designs had been based on the surveys, comments that the students and the staff made during the mascot selection process. As you can see, in the first design, we have the Guardian Peaks forming the top of the crest. The Guardian Peaks are the three volcanic mountains that are visible from Portland, Oregon. Why East, Mount Hood, Pato, Mount Adams, and Louis, Mount San Helens. In the middle of the crest, we can see an owl. Owls are native of our region. And in some cultures, owls are known as guardians and protectors. They symbolize wisdom, truth and strength. The owl with the, his wings open is a symbol of being ready to protect or defend the weak. With the owl, we symbolize Ida B. Wells protecting the people that were, that were mistreated. In the last visual, we can observe an owl with his wings closed. And within his wings, we can see the Guardian Peaks. That visual is to try to represent how the owl is protecting the community, our diverse community. The one in the middle is just, you, as you can see, is just the peaks, the Guardian Peaks with the name of our beloved high school. As I said in the beginning, the visual elements are not finalized. They are work in progress. Um, the owls are not complete. You maybe think that are a little bit harsh, or, uh, they look maybe that are angry. But I don't want you to, um, think of that because there are not, there is not the final product. Just think about what they symbolize for us, as in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Aisha?
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero and school board members. I'm Aisha Conning, proud vice principal of Ida B. Wells Barnett High School. We wanted to do our due diligence and receive some additional feedback on our mascot and center our student voices. So during the week of April twelfth, we held five student focus groups. Our student focus groups were our student athletes, our student performing artists, our student. our student leadership, our Black Student Union and our Asian Desi Pacific Islander Student Unit, Student Union. We had a conversation with them and asked them to take a look at the draft mascot renditions that Norma just shared with you. And we asked them to think about what do they connect and disconnect with in regards to the new mascot proposal. We heard from our, what we heard from our students really is also informing the design and what the design will ultimately look like. We see, received tremendous feedback from them. And you'll hear some of the quotes from our student focus groups from John L, who is a junior at I'd be Wells Barnett High School and also has been a highly engaged member of our renaming committee. So I'm going to turn things over to John L.
Hello and good evening, everyone. As I stated, my name is John L Mundero. And today I will be reading some of these quotes stated by some of the student focus groups. It seems to represent the values of a bigger group. A guardian is a part of of the common people, not in charge. Therefore, they echo the thoughts and wishes of the people. I'd be Wells was a journalist, so she was a guardian of the truth and justice. With this message, she's like a superhero to us. And we want our school and community to be protectors of truth and justice as well. We want our mascot to be a reflection of us and I'd be Wells. I like the connection to the guardian peaks. I think the local connection is really powerful. When I heard guardians, I think about someone that protects people and someone that does the right things, somebody that puts others above themselves, all stated by I'd be well students.
Thank you, Janelle. So finally, just a little bit about the work that lies ahead for us. Because after all, from the very beginning of this process, our committee was clear that changing the name of our school and mascot was just the first two steps of a much more substantive school culture building process. Even though we're just getting started, great things are already happening. Next week, for example, Dan Duster, I'd be Wells's great grandson, will meet with both our staff and will participate in a separate community-wide event. We would love all of you and anybody else who's watching to join us. Our local PTAs are already supporting this effort and are making sure that our parents and as well as our students have access to books about our namesake through local libraries. We're working with a local artist whose name will remain on this closed until the mural is completed. He's working on a 24 foot mural that will be displayed in our main hallway in honor of our namesake. Our ninth grade teams will be meeting soon to talk about how I'd be the queen can become a core text in our ninth grade curriculum. One of our students recently designed a T-shirt that is now on sale in our school. The motto included on the shirt lifting as we climb reflects both our school-wide commitment to caring for one another as guardians. And it honors one of the first national women's associations that I'd be Wells helped start. I could go on and tell you about the social studies teachers who just created a podcast that explores the connection between I'd be Wells and Woodrow Wilson. I can tell you about our journalism class and the new magazine that we will be launching soon and more. The point is, we are just getting started and really look forward to the work that lies ahead that our new namesake and our mascot are inspiring in all of us. So thank you again for the opportunity and we welcome any questions or comments.
I have a comment. First of all, thank you, everyone. I want to thank the students, alums, staff, community members and Principal Christic for your willingness to have the difficult conversations while you, excuse me, examined the impact on the use of the evergreens as a mascot at I'd be Wells. And I'm going to shout out and thank all of us who envisioned a different outcome, one that would allow us to live into our values, to be a learning moment, contribute positively to the culture of I'd be Wells now and into the future. Our, this process and our process is a beautiful example of community engagement and of using information as it is received to create a different outcome, one that we didn't know when we started. And I want to specifically thank my colleagues who were courageous enough to speak up on March 30th, even though the discomfort of talking about, even through this discomfort of talking about race, talking about lynching and about historical harms against black people. You demonstrated what allyship looks like and and I also want to encourage my white colleagues who did not speak up in the moment to speak up next time to display your courage and and do that because we know that silence equals violence. And it's also really up to our, it's up to white people to speak up in the moment when you, when you hear something. And 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 know that the discomfort is where we're doing the learning, especially around race. So it's absolutely up to white people to interrupt racism as it happens and historic and and recognize the historic injustices for all people and for all Americans and those especially who are black and indigenous as we acknowledge this painful history of the country. And I want us all to do better. And lastly, I just want to share, I love the mascot, the guardians. I think it's great. I love the owls and I'm really proud in moments like this to be part of the district.
So I'd like to join Director DePass and thanking the community and especially the naming committee and Camille, the district staff who's working with the naming committee. You know, one of the things we operate under is like no surprises, a rule of no surprises. Because as colleagues who are working together on really tough issues, that's sort of the best way to work with each other. And I'm sure what happened on the last board meeting wasn't, wasn't new a surprise, but it was coming in in real time. And I really appreciate that, let me say, I want to just join Director DePass, really proud of the district that we demonstrated we're a learning community, that we can listen to different voices. Just the integrity with which you did your work and reexamined like new information and concerns that were brought up. You know, I just want to thank the committee because I know that there were a lot of different voices, some very hateful from around the country about the decision to even go back and look at the name. But then others who made judgments about the intentions of the committee on the recommendations in the first, in the first place. And so I just want to honor and thank the individuals who had the courage and the integrity to go back. And I actually, I like the name Guardian. I think the name, it's, it's perfect. And it's, it was an interesting process and painful in some ways to get here, but I, I think it is the perfect. It's, I think we talked last time about these are like hundred year, potentially a hundred year decisions. And I think it's the perfect name and I'm really excited and I love the initial look at the branding. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Director Scott, I saw that you had your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, just just adding to those two voices. Thank you, Directors Brim Edwards and DePass. I'm, I'm also really excited to support this. I think guardians is, is great. I, I love, I love the imagery. I love the, the mountain imagery as well and the guardian peaks. And I think, you know, just, just, just sort of acknowledging and that, that connection to our local community is really exciting. And then the connection to I'd be Wells. So I think it's great and, and, and I'm excited, you know, a, a, as a Wilson graduate and with kids who will graduate from I'd be Wells. Really excited for this change. I, I want to sort of second, you know, what, what my colleagues have said about also being really proud of the district in this process. And, you know, the, the courage to sort of step back and take another look, that's not easy to do. And, you know, it, you know, and, and this committee really did such a phenomenal job of, of really listening to that, to those voices that raised issues and concerns and going back. And I was really honored to be invited to just listen to some of the conversation with our, our black community leaders and, and just listening to, you know, all those voices that, you know, were really focused on getting this right was, was, was really great and, and being able to sort of put aside, I, I don't, I, I limit my time on social media. And sometimes that makes me feel like I miss out, but sometimes it's a real advantage. And this is one of those moments, you know, that I, I know this went national and international and other places. And I know there were sort of hateful things. And in some ways it doesn't matter because what we did as a community is, is what matters and what's important. And, and the voices of, of the selection committee and the high school and, and the the folks we engaged with, you know, out in the broader community are, are what mattered to us. And this is the right decision. And I also want to say, I was so surprised and excited to get my copy in the mail of the I'd be Wells the Queen book. I was just, I had no idea. And the PTAs of the feeder schools sort of got together to send these out. So it was just super exciting to have it show up and, and now be, you know, here for, for my family to sort of, to sort of browse through and read. So I just really appreciate everyone's work and I'm excited about yesterday.
All right. Well, this portion was for us to ask questions of the committee and it doesn't sound like we have any questions. We're actually going to go ahead and have some board discussion event. Director Bailey, did you have a question of the committee?
Yes. Could you send us the date of the event? I tried to get it on my calendar on my phone. The slide went by a little too quickly, so.
We'll send it out. It's May 6th. It's next Thursday from, from six to seven.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And then while my mic is on, I just want to give a big shout out to Camille, who has been absolutely instrumental in this process and hasn't said much in these meetings, but her guidance and support has, has been invaluable. So Camille, thank you so much.
Mrs. Watmore, I saw that you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board as well for giving us the extension. I know we'd been originally scheduled to come back to you on the 13th and the extra two weeks really gave us the time to do that further community engagement and to listen to more that people had to say and to really have those conversations and lean into the work. So I just appreciate the extension. Thank you. Thank you for consideration and your support.
You so much. And Mr. Osborne, I really appreciated your portion of the presentation, just how clear and thorough that was. So thank you. Any other questions for the committee before we formally move this and then have our procedural parts? I think you again all, do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 6293, resolution to change the mascot of I'd be Wells Barnett High School?
So moved.
Seconded. Second.
Thank you. Director Brim Edwards moves and Director DePass seconds the adoption of resolution 6293. Is there any further board discussion?
Chair Lowry, I just wanted to thank especially Mr. Osborne and the rest of the committee and all the student leaders because this process is a great reflection of our, a lot of what we have in our vision for the district and especially for our students. So to be reflective, critical thinkers, to be adaptable. So I know it was quite a process that led to the first recommendation and for all of you to be so thoughtful and gracious and reflective in starting the process anew and interrogating some of the assumptions or impressions created by, you know, the first proposal of the evergreens is just, it's exactly the kind of process that we want to model for our students. And it's a little messy and it's a little time consuming sometimes. But I think tonight is a good testament that it can, it can end up with much better results when you take the time to do that and to do that in community. So thanks to all of you for your service and really excited and, and happy to support this.
And I just want to echo Ms. Hamilton. I so appreciated what you said and I'm so thankful for students that are on tonight and students participating from Sweden and just the investment from this community in this work and in helping us really get excited and understand this amazing new mascot. Any other board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
All right. The board will now vote on resolution 6293, resolution to change the mascot of I'd be Wells Barnett High School. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6293 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. Go Guardians!
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We now turn to some other exciting business as we talk about our school calendar. At our last board meeting, we had reviewed the proposed 2020, 21, 22 school calendar and had an opportunity to ask questions via email to Deputy Superintendent Craig Quayar. Superintendent Guerrero, is there anything else you would like to add before we vote on the calendar before us?
Well, I'm, I'm glad the directors have had a couple of weeks to, to review it. Hopefully you've noticed some of the features that this administration has tried to be consistent about, trying to keep a student-focused, family-friendly school calendar, try to ensure five full instructional days in a typical week wherever possible. Try to keep uninterrupted whole weeks for, for instruction. Make sure we build in features like parent teacher conferences. You know, account for the, the Thanksgiving week. Make sure that our teacher planning days happen on Mondays or Fridays, so we don't have student breaks in the middle of the week. So, so these are all things that we've been consistent about, including a, a, a start date prior to, to Labor Day, even for 21, 22's proposed calendar. There's a few additional features we've added in additional professional development day being proposed for teachers at CSI Title One and Kellogg feeder schools and two days of extra PD time for new Kellogg Middle School faculty so that they have the additional time to, to come together. In addition, you know, a four-day kindergarten ramp up window where students would come in in small groups for a day also gives an opportunity for folks to work around some of the religious holidays at that time and also a chance to, to complete some, some one-on-one assessments, which are going to be really important as we open up in the fall to see where our youngest students are and to help provide some of that orientation and connection as they come on campus for the first time. We're going to do, we're proposing to do the same thing for first grade for, for two days. So we have half classes in also to orient them and also because some of them are coming in for the first time without that kindergarten experience. So you're going to hear, these are some of the elements that are, that are part of our learning acceleration and recovery planning as well, but I just wanted to point that out because it is related to the school calendar. So there you have the proposed calendar and I, I know that you're considering that to, to adopt tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 6294, resolution to approve the 2021 through 22 school district calendar?
They're moved.
Second.
Director Scott moves and Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of resolution 6294. Is there any board discussion on the calendar?
So this has been an issue that I have always been interested in the last seven or eight years because I will say there has been an evolution to a much more student-focused, family-friendly calendar. I think this year continues it. So I want to think, I, I think that, that the changes that were instituted a number of years ago continue through. And I think families are now adjusting to this. This is the, 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 the school calendar that works for us. A question, just, I, I think just in light of this last year. One, are we still keeping traditional snow days in the calendar or are those days that we just moved to CDL? Or I'm sorry, comprehensive distance learning for the non acronym people.
I know that this has been a topic that continues to keep evolving here. If I could invite Deputy Quayar here, who's, who's been engaged in some of those conversations. I know, I know that we're equipped differently or experienced differently to, to keep distance learning continuity going, but Craig, can you answer the question?
Yes, Director Brim Edwards and I'm bored. That's a really good question. And, and you know, I think that as we reflect in the last 16 months and plus that we have been in a virtual learning format. It has absolutely equipped us to be more tech savvy and to be able to be, you know, organizationally centered and managed in, in a variety of different ways, utilizing some of our tech resources and tools that we've been engaged in specifically even through CDL. We do know that there are still a number of considerations that would need to be taken into account. If, if we were to reimagine what potential inclement weather days look like. You know, and some of those considerations, of course, you know, we You know, and some of those considerations, of course, you know, we'd have to make sure that we are in partnership with our labor partners because there are, you know, a variety of pieces that we would have to make sure that we are, you know, that we are collaborating and we are in agreement on and also ensuring too, through our new tech enhanced infrastructure for teaching and learning, the, you know, ensuring 100% that, you know, you know, every single student is afforded a tech device as well as broadband infrastructure to be able to have access. But I will tell you that it's something that, you know, we are continuing the conversations on. And it is something that I could say that is probably more of a reality today than it was a year ago.
Thank you. And I'm not advocating getting rid of sled time, just, just to be clear. So my other question relates to just the expectation that next fall we'll be back full time in person. And while this looks like the new traditional calendar, I'm wondering if, well, first is that that's the assumption it's based on. I want to just clarify that. And then are there other modifications that you see that would maybe not be visible to families, but maybe have staff impacts of preparing to go back, like shift from hybrid to full time in person?
I think, you know, it's really about, you know, ensuring that we are following, you know, all of the guidance from our local health authority, multiple accountable CDC, making sure that, you know, our health metrics do allow us for a full pivot back to a full in-person structure. I, I can't say that I foresee anything. What I can say is, is I do think that we are positioned more so now to be able to shift into a distance learning environment or format if things were to arise and the need to do so. But I, I think right now, Director Brim Edwards, I don't, I don't foresee anything that would have any type of staff or student impact, especially regarding the new, the new proposed calendar.
I, I think what we all want to see is greater extended learning opportunities. And so you're going to get a, you know, a first sort of description of what we're proposing that looks like this summer. There'll continue to be opportunities throughout the course of the school year. One of the things that we're asking the board to consider in our budget proposal are things like Saturday school. And then also what does the fifth quarter look like for the summer a year from now? So if you take into account all of that additional instructional time that we're trying to sort of build back and add to make up for that time. And of course, those aren't compulsory for our labor partners, but certainly additional opportunities for our students and our staff to participate along with our community partners.
Well, the superintendent was speaking to learning acceleration. I was not speaking to that, the Director Brim Edwards, because I know that that we are close to that presentation. But the superintendent did hit on, you know, we are going to have a myriad of opportunities, you know, for staff partners, community students specifically to engage, you know, in a myriad of, of, you know, learning acceleration, you know, such as extended learning and, you know, project based learning opportunities, interventions, you know, tutorials. There's going to be a menu of a variety of access points for, for, for students throughout the course of the year. And we're going to, we're going to get a first glance of what summer programming is going to look like in a little bit. And we also hope to reengage the board throughout the course of the summer in terms of what fall learning acceleration is going to look like, as the superintendent alluded.
I thank you for that. I have just another note about the weather. And if you're not from Portland, one inch and everything shuts down and it's not for school. It's for sledding and snowball fights. But we also might consider, you know, the impacts of wildfires because we've had a very dry year. The, it seems like the trend is that fires are starting earlier. And as we noticed last year, we had this, you know, horrendous air quality. So, you know, our weather, our weather events might not just happen in the winter time. They might, we might need to be prepared to keep people indoors during the late summer and into the fall.
I think what you're hearing is anticipating that there are many circumstances that don't make it preferable to have our students on campus in those cases. You know, if we get our kindergartners equipped and assure that every other student is similarly equipped and, you know, we've worked things out with all of our labor groups as well as our teachers for days like those. You know, it could be a late start. So maybe you get your sledding and your lesson in, but I think those are still conversations that we need to work out.
Other board discussion?
Just one more item. I want to say appreciation of the flexibility of the kindergarten ramp up. September 7th and 8th is Rosh Hashanah. And I know Mr. Cogan spoke with the Jewish Federation. Many families celebrate the first day only, some celebrate both days. So we may have some parents have their kindergartners at home that first day of kindergarten to observe that holiday.
Appreciate the shout out. I also want to add a thank you once again to Daniel Cogan for wrestling with all the requirements and desires that we ask him to build into this puzzle and checking in with all of our stakeholders and coming up with the model that we're, we appreciate. Thank you, Daniel.
All right. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on the calendar?
No.
All right. Any other board discussion? Looks like we're good. All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6294? Resolution to approve the 2021 through 22 school district calendar? All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6294 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting?
Yes.
All right, thank you all so much. I think it is time for us to take another quick five minute break. So we will be back in five minutes.
We started welcoming students at 7:45. That moment was a frenzy of a lot of emotions. We had a lot of parents drop off their students. We had some students ride the bus.
Arrival, I think, went really well today. It was exciting as families and students arrived to see them, to talk to them. Families would walk their students through the line and then students would take their place on the dots. And families were then able to wait up above the lines and watch their students as they were greeted by their teacher and then waved to their students as their lines went into the building.
We had quite a few visitors in the building, including our Superintendent Guadalupe Guerrero, as well as Governor Kate Brown. It was great to have community leaders in our building. Families can see that our leaders are listening. Kids learn best when they're here in the school, in the classroom.
I'm so excited to see the kids back. Everybody's happy, teacher, the principal, vice principal, and me too.
Students seemed very happy in class.
So we were singing, dancing.
Everybody had masks on. Everyone was following the safety protocols. We definitely had some fun on recess. Might have included some very bad hula hoop competitions.
It was nice to see just their smile.
Virtually all students were extremely excited. You could tell they were nervous, but they finally got to see their teacher in person. They finally got to see other students from their class, working on a coloring sheet, working on solving math equations. One classroom had students make crowns that they would put on their head. And it was just a great way to see kids in action. Having kids in the building, you have to show students how to walk in the hallway to get to recess or come back from recess. And we're realizing that some of those transitions are taking a little bit longer than expected.
Well, these are unprecedented times. So I think it's hard to say if it went exactly as expected because in the pandemic, I feel like it's hard to ever know what to expect. But I do think things went really well and overall it was a really great day and kids seemed really excited to be here and excited to come back again tomorrow.
All in all, a great moment, a great way to see everybody in one place. And I think people were longing for that, a feeling of connection that school provides.
This is the opportunity to be something that can meet the needs of every single student and ensure that all of our students have all the opportunities that they deserve and really prepare them for the jobs of the future.
As we return, I just wanted to share that, as many of us know, Superintendent Guerrero was awarded with the Oregon Music Educators Association Award of Excellence for Administrators. That award actually happened in January, but their latest magazine newsletter has come out celebrating him as an administrator who supports and has a passion for music education. So just wanted to, once again, congratulate Superintendent Guerrero on the receipt of the OMEA award tonight.
Well, thank you, Chair. That was unexpected. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I think we have to celebrate the amazing work. And we all know that I have a heart for marching band and for all music. So of course, couldn't let that go unanswered. And it's been a while since I've been able to mention marching band at a board meeting. So this was a great opportunity for me to do so.
Well, you're in the right place here at PPS where we're building our arts pathways. So can't wait to give you an update on that.
That's what I wanted to say, Superintendent, that your passion and commitment to arts education is, you have left your mark already on this district and we're grateful for that.
I'm waiting for the introduction of heavy metal into our high school curriculum. But what's happening has been great.
Yes, those of you who don't know, Superintendent might have a passion for heavy metal and history there.
And heavy metal might have been an elective at MLC in the seventies. Maybe, maybe not.
What I'm waiting for is the superintendent to designate people's walk on songs before they present to the board.
Yes. Now, we are trying to encourage the superintendent to branch out into some different types of musical and arts. I've been trying to encourage him to do a TikTok dance, but so far he has been hesitant to do so. But perhaps with enough board support, we can make that happen.
I would be fully supportive of TikTok.
Maybe Principal McCarter can give me some tips there. You guys are doing wonders for my sense of self-image here.
I'd be glad, glad to give some dance tips.
Well, Superintendent, I think you would like us to change the subject. So would you like to?
Let's do that.
Would you like to introduce the next agenda item, which is the measure of academic progress through MAP?
I would like to, and I appreciate a lot of the board's continued conversations, especially in our recent discussion around our interest and really knowing how our students are doing. So we did move forward with administration of the mid-year MAP assessment, otherwise known as the NWA Measures of Academic Progress. We've started to share those results with our parents. We know we want to do a lot of future work and really sort of understanding those and how they fit in with a broader balanced assessment system. But we did commit to coming back to the board once we had all that information and done a little analysis and disaggregation. And so under Chief Russ Brown, Dr. Brown's leadership and his team, I know he prepared quite the analysis for you, for the listening audience. If you want to dig in, knock yourself out there. There's many pages that'll, that'll help sort of articulate how our students are doing. But here to say more, Russ Brown.
And I have to say, I, even though I'm the data guy, I would welcome some walk in music. We can talk about selections later.
Does that mean you're also interested in perhaps doing a TikTok dance?
I could dance my way in, but no TikToks, thank you. Just keeping it lively here. As the PowerPoint's coming up here, yeah, thank you. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly because we're running a little late and we've got some meaty topics that need to be discussed later. As the superintendent mentioned, we performed a mid-year MAP assessment this year. Next slide, please. And today I want to go through and talk, you know, sort of broadly, you know, what is the MAP assessment? When is it typically given? When was it given this year and why? You know, why do we bother to do this assessment? And then I want to spend some time talking about what we learned in terms of who was tested, the reliability of the data that we received, what it tells us about achievement and what it tells us about growth as well. Next slide, please. So, you know, the superintendent mentioned a balanced assessment system. And, and you know, the lion's share of a balanced assessment system is really formative assessment practices that happen minute to minute in a classroom. Those help guide instruction on a daily basis. And then we talked about like unit assessments, which follow larger chunks of instruction. And then we have interim assessments. And purpose of the interim assessment really is to measure standards and content over larger windows of time. So it reflects multiple standards and helps us understand how students are doing throughout the course of the year. And by their very nature, they have to be very reliable and they need to be very predictive of performance on other assessments. That they get their validity and their reliability by, A, the accuracy of the measurement and what they can tell us about how students will perform on other, other assessments later. The MAP assessment is unique in that it's computer adaptive. And it's computer adaptive in such, in a sense that it will personalize itself to an individual student. It'll go up or down based on what the student has learned and what they're proficient in and will actually adjust across multiple grade levels if need be. These are typically, this type of assessment is typically given two or three times a year, typically at the start of the year as a baseline and at least at mid-year as well. And depending on what you have as the end of your assessment, you might use it as well. Next slide. So when we talk about why, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about our theory of action and the importance of accelerating learning for our Black and Indigenous students who want to really close those opportunity gaps for students so that every student, as they're going into high school, they have that opportunity to take advantage of those curriculum pathways that we're talking about in high school for obtaining some form of post-secondary readiness. Well, that work doesn't start in high school. The foundation for that's laid much earlier. And so you can't wait until high school to start closing those opportunity gaps. You have to ensure that everybody comes into high school with a set of skills that will allow them to take full, full opportunity of high school. MAP as a measure provides a very reliable measure of growth and that, you know, sort of learning over time and achievement with respect to standards at a point in time along our curriculum map. And so that helps us know, you know, it's sort of like going to the doctor and having your child stand up against the growth chart. Where are you now and where are you as you move along over time? And, you know, as I mentioned, it's very reliable. So again, as standing up against a wall measuring stick, you know, those measurements tend to be pretty reliable if they're done in a standardized way over time. And they tell you something about future growth. Well, in the case of the MAP assessment, it tells us a great deal about how students will do on Sback. It also tells us a great deal about how students will do on the PSAT and the SAT or ACT for students in upper grades. Next slide. So again, as I mentioned, last year we did an analysis and we showed that the correlations between the MAP assessment and the Sback were very high. They ranged in the midpoint eights to the midpoint nine. They ranged in the midpoint eights to the midpoint nines. And that allows us to predict whether or not somebody's going to be proficient on the state standardized assessment at an eighty-five to eighty-seven percent accuracy level. They, you know, these assessments have not only a high degree of reliability, but predictive validity. They tell us something about something we're interested in at the end of the year. And it allows us to make comparisons across the country. So lets us know how our students are doing in terms of comparisons, in terms of achievement and growth relative to their age-related peers across the country. And probably the most important thing is, you know, as teachers use this as a way to encourage self-reflective practices and understand where things are working and where they aren't, teacher teams are doing that, it really can help us identify where we're accelerating learning so that we can build upon those practices as we move forward. Next slide, please. So this year, this was our first system-wide assessment in the pandemic. We had tried to do one in the fall, but the wildfires were just, it was a little bit too much. At that point in time, we chose to pause it. The testing window this year was between February 1st and March 12th. And it was a voluntary assessment. We wanted to provide our parents an opportunity to have a quick checkup on their students. And we really worked to minimize the footprint on instructional time and to, again, allow parents to have choice in this process. And it was a remote assessment. We had some comfort in having a remote assessment done because we had pivoted one last spring with one of our buildings. And there was evidence from NWA, from partner districts across the country, that the remote assessments could be equally reliable to in-person assessments. And so we felt comfortable that this was a good use of our student time and a good piece of information for our parents to be able to have. Next slide, please. So what did we learn? Next. Next slide, please. Yeah. Well, let's start with who was tested. So this year we saw about sixty-nine percent of our students participate in math. That's down about twenty-four percent from last year. And we saw about sixty-eight percent of our students participate in reading. That was actually an uptick in reading participation this year. So about three percent more students participated in reading this year than the last year. It's worth noting on the front end, the participation rates were higher for white students than they were for Black or Indigenous students. So that puts a pause in the data and then makes you wonder, well, how else did the students maybe differ in terms of the data? Next slide. So when we look at the students who took the assessment versus the ones who didn't, and we looked at how they did last year on MAP, we see that the kids who tested this year performed better on the MAP assessment last year than those kids who chose not to participate this year. So our pool of kids who were participating this year were higher flyers compared to last year. We have some students last year who we would really like to have more information that didn't participate this year. So the sample's not completely representative of our population. We had to think about that as we move forward and looked at the data. Next slide. So, you know, a question would be, you know, again, reliability. Here's a remote administration. What does it tell us about our students? Well, for those students who took the test both years, the scores were highly correlated to one another. So students who took the test last winter tended to score very similarly, excuse, pardon me, let me restate that. Students who had similar scores last December tended to have similar scores this year in the winter assessment. And when we look across our tested grades and subjects, those correlations range between point eight one seven and point eight eight one. So if you look at the scatter plot here, every one of those points reflects a student's score. Actually, a score pair, how they, the last year and how they did this year. And you can see those scores are pretty tightly clustered along a line there. And this is a correlation of point eight seven six. So when you have high correlations between two tests like this, it shows that they're highly related and the only way that can happen is if they're both reliable. The reliability of the measure ultimately caps how well this correlation can be. And I would liken it to, we talked about dancing a moment ago, but, you know, some of us might get on a scale from time to time. And when we get on a scale, if the scale is consistent, you get, you know, reliable, it's consistent, you get on the scale and it says the same thing, no matter how many times you get on it. At my scale, I try it several times, sometimes to try to get a different number. It doesn't really work that way. On the other hand, if a scale isn't reliable, you get very different numbers each time. And if I go get on another scale that is reliable, even if I try to correlate those numbers, if one scale's wonky and I try to put it with another one, it ultimately caps the correlation between the two. Here, the scores are highly correlated because both measures are reliable. They tell us something consistently about student performance over time. Next slide, please. So what do we know coming into this? Well, prior research from NWA and other tools similar to this had projected reduced achievement both in reading and math. And some of that came out last year and sort of created this dialogue around how much learning was occurring or not occurring for students. And then the fall, when folks started looking at actually what had happened last year, folks saw that reading gains were actually stronger than those in math. And a lot of the concern that folks had seen or had about reading just didn't materialize. So when we looked at this data, given that there was missing data and given that the scores are so highly related, that allows us then to use information from last year to fill in some of the blanks because we know how like-scoring peers did this year. And so we used data from last year for non-tested students to be able to, or students who didn't test this year, we use their data from last year as a way to estimate how they would perform this year. And so what did we observe overall? Next slide, please. So in mathematics, we saw a one-point-seven to two-point-nine point drop depending on the grade level. So we did see drops in math. And that was after accounting for, again, the students who didn't test last year. So in fourth grade, where there was a one-point-seven point drop, that meant the fourth graders accomplished about eighty-three percent of the learning that we anticipated last year. On the other hand, in sixth grade, where we saw a two-point-nine point drop, students only accomplished about forty percent of the learning in math that we had expected from the year before. So they were clearly, as students were making that progression through mathematics last year, they didn't make it as far as we would have liked. That being said, that sort of mirrors what we've seen around the country as well and maybe isn't so much of a surprise. And in fact, these numbers are a little better than what were observed around the country. Next slide, please. So obviously, if students didn't make the achievement that we expected, they didn't make the growth either. So roughly three and a half percent fewer students made the growth that was expected. They didn't hit their growth targets. And the largest drops in growth were with our Asian, multiracial and white students. On the other hand, you know, while the achievement gaps continue to exist for our Black and Indigenous students, we didn't see them widening and we didn't see a substantial difference in growth rates for our Black and Indigenous students. If we go on to the next slide and start looking at reading, the reading achievement was actually much more stable. We had one grade where we lost about six tenths of a point. And on the other hand, in most grades, we saw a little bit of a bump up. So in fourth grade, again, we had a little bit of a downward trend in achievement. But again, if we look at that, it means that students in fourth grade achieved about ninety-three percent of their learning that we anticipated this past year. Grades six through eight actually showed improvements. And that was even taking into account and suppressing the scores using the information for, again, that group of kids who tested last year, who performed a little bit more poorly than those kids who tested this year. When we functioned that in, still in sixth and eighth grade, our students did very well. They showed improvements. And across grades three through eight, our students in reading actually outperformed the national average on achievement. Next slide. So when we talk about growth for reading, we did have about one and a half percent of our students who failed to meet the growth targets this year relative to last. But we did see modest increase in the growth for many students. Again, the achievement gaps for Black and Native students are still there, but they did not grow. And that, I think, runs counter to some of the expectations. This performance was clearly better than what we had anticipated. But again, in alignment with what we've seen nationally, that reading, reading scores tended to be a little bit more stable than math. Next slide, please. So in the big picture on this, this is meant to be a snapshot of performance. It was really meant to give our parents an opportunity to find out something about how our students were doing. It was our first systemic look at student performance throughout the pandemic. And frankly, the results are cautiously optimistic. That, you know, while students didn't make the gains that we would like to have seen in mathematics, they made gains that were better than maybe anticipated. And certainly the changes that we saw in reading were very, very promising. So as we move into the next year, you know, it's going to be really important to get a solid assessment of students. I think we heard the superintendent mention that at the start of the year, we really need to get a solid assessment of our students as they're coming in the door. So we have a sense of a solid baseline for everyone so that we can plan for learning acceleration as we move forward in the coming year. And one of the nice things about having a reliable and consistent assessment through this window is it does give us the opportunity to sort of understand students' learning before the pandemic, during the pandemic and afterwards, using the same ruler all the way through. And that is really a nice place to be for a system to be able to have a constant measure that we can look at over that window of time. Next slide, please. I think we're around to questions at this point. I tried to go through that quickly. I do really look forward to an introductory dance music.
Try and find a song for you, Dr. Brown. Just, it's a really, I think it's a really simple question, but when you say in reading, you know, we saw some growth, can you just remind me, is that, is that growth from last year to this year? Or is it growth in terms of what we expected them to do and they exceeded that growth?
We actually saw improvements in achievement. So in several of the grades, we actually saw improvements in achievement from last year to this year. So students actually performed a little bit better this year on the test than they did last year. And again, across grade levels in reading, our kids were exceeding national averages on this assessment.
I may not be asking the question right. We would expect someone the next year to score better, right? Like that would, there's a normal growth that we expect. When you say they increased their achievement, is it, is it they beat their growth expectation or they just performed better than they did last year?
So.
Or am I, or am I asking the wrong question?
Yeah. Well, let me answer it in a couple of different ways. One, when we talk about changes in achievement, we're talking relative to the achievement expectations at a grade level. So yes, of course, you know, if I started in grade five last year, I'm, I, you know, the average score at grade five, say, two fifteen. When I'm thinking about mathematics, if I go to grade six, the average score around the country is two-twenty. So in reading, not only did our kids make that move, they actually, instead of going to two-twenty, they went up a little bit. So they're, relative to their grade level standard, we saw a cohort-to-cohort improvement in performance in reading. And that's even taking into account that I suppressed the scores for the kids who didn't participate this year. So when I included them, it brought those averages down because they performed more poorly last year. So many students actually demonstrated a little bit more growth than was expected. And again, the achievement rates actually increased.
May I ask about that? So I'm losing my question.
It's late.
Yeah, it is. Of the people that took the test that showed greater, a little bit greater than anticipated growth. I'm sorry, I've lost the question. I'll have to come back to it. It was a good one.
I'm sure it was.
Maybe I could jump in while thinking about your question, Michelle, if you don't mind?
It just came back. I'm sorry. It's a function of age. So we know that not everybody took the test and so it's somewhat of a select group. Have we, were we, have we gained any knowledge about why those gains were made? Is there anything that we can, we can take from this extraordinary learning year that might help us in the future? I mean, that's, that's getting down into like maybe a different type of assessment. But is there anything that, that you could see in the data that would show us maybe best practices? Or, you know, what worked for these kids that, that we might be able to apply in the future?
Yeah, one of the great things about data and having data like this is it raises questions. It always raises more questions than it does provide answers. So when I look at the reading data, again, it's promising here. Kids who took the test both years actually did better this year than would have been expected. And even when I include what I think the effect would have been on the average for the overall by pushing scores down based on how kids did last year, who didn't test this year, our averages are still higher than the national average. So it is really quite promising. That brings up a lot of whys and hows. How did that happen? Why did that happen? It's somewhat counterintuitive that, so, so that's why I say it's, I'm cautiously optimistic about this data. I'm very interested in seeing what, what data will look like when students are back in chairs and we're in a standardized environment and we can assess everyone at the same time. That's going to be really important. Do I have some running hypotheses around this? I think kids had to read a lot more this year independently. And reading is an iterative activity and you improve it by doing more of it. And kids were in an independent space where they were required to read a lot. And so, you know, that's one of my running hypotheses. Another one is that, you know, in talking with colleagues who are much closer to schools on a daily basis, you know, I hear that, you know, we saw a lot of intentional differentiation. Well, that, that would produce this type of result too. Because, you know, again, we're customizing or personalizing education to meet the needs of individual students. We will spend years trying to best understand what worked and what didn't and what we can carry forward out of this.
Well, thank you. And it's that differentiation that I was wondering, that would be my hypothesis as well. What impact that had on, I know teachers that did small breakout rooms regularly. And I was just wondering if that, if you were seeing the impact of that, that small group instruction in the data?
I know I've got team members who are very interested in digging in and finding, finding out some of the whys behind this and some of the qualitative data about teacher and student experiences in this. You know, I would be remiss and I think it was one of the talking points, but I really should mention, I think this is a testament to how hard our teachers work this year. It's shown up in a bunch of different ways. And we've talked about relationships and this is another way that that shows up. And again, I just, I'm thankful to our teachers. I'm thankful to the students who worked so hard during this academic year and their building leaders. Again, all the folks who leaned in to try to help our students through what has been, I think, a very challenging time.
So yeah, I appreciate your cautious optimism. And I want to throw out, I think, why I'm I think, I think those are pretty good results. And I think it was incredibly useful to do the MAP when we did it because we need to budget around this. And this is clearly saying, hey, we need to ramp up our math much more than our reading. We need both, but especially the math piece on the big end. And that's incredibly useful knowledge to have. The cautious part of me says, you're, I would guess your regression that you used to make up for the students who didn't take the test assumed that, in a sense, they were participating as much as anybody else and so would have scored. When, I'm guessing a lot of those students were really not connected. And I'm guessing that was disproportionately so for African-American students, Indigenous students, other, other students of color. And so that, that would make the results a little less positive, if that's true. And that's again, why I totally support, you know, as soon as it's optimal in the fall to get that on-the-ground measure to help us really focus in on the students who need the most support.
Director Bailey, you have outed my secret. It was within grade, within sub- It was a within-grade, within-subject regression. And it makes that very assumption that, that you, you said. And again, that's part of my cautious optimism here. We still have, just to be clear, seven out of 10 kids took the test both years. Okay, you know, it's a substantial overlap here. So we're filling, you know, and by suppressing the scores, it was an effort to be as transparent as possible about what we think the effect would be had those other kids taken the test. They could, however, have performed much worse than their peers would like scores. That, that, that is yet to be seen. So again, very important to understand how students actually, and to your point, when it's practical at the start of the year to, to do that, you know, getting that baseline is going to be really important.
Dr. Brown, I want to say thank you for this deep dive and, and your responsible narrative that you have built around it because there are a lot of nuances here. And of course, there, you're, you're in the business of being able to make reasonable predictions from data that you're familiar with, and we're not in that zone right now. There are a lot of variables that we've just never dealt with before. And, you know, when I look at this, I think there are probably a lot of puts and takes because we need to remember that this data is only from October, right?
No, no, this was, this was in February to March.
Oh, February, February. So halfway through, that's right, that's right, February. You know, and I think, I think, you know, our teachers, it, it measures, you know, where, what was going on with our students last spring when they immediately went into CDL and when our teachers had to pivot on a dime and our central supports had to pivot on a dime to create remote curriculum. And I think everybody got a whole lot better at that game when we went back to school in the fall. But then, you know, we've still had, essentially, well, I guess just three, you know, three to four more months since this marker was taken. And even though many of our students have come back in hybrid, it's still, you know, at least half CDL. Even for those students who've come back. So it's just so interesting because I appreciate your cautious optimism and it seems, it seems warranted, doesn't seem irresponsible, but we really don't know where we'll be. And we don't know, we don't know much about who those kids are who really have been pretty disengaged from their learning. But, but what you've given us is some, some good information from which we can make, you know, some assumptions in our budgeting process. Not, not that we can make, but that those of you who are in this business can make as you make recommendations to us in terms of where we need to put our investments. So I appreciate it and it is, I agree with, I agree with you that it's a real testament to our teachers and also to our families, you know, to our families, not, I mean, even for the bare fact of, of doing the test, taking the test, overseeing their students, including little students at home, you know? But really to our teachers for just figuring out a way to still make the learning happen.
Any further questions for Dr. Brown?
I have a couple of questions and they're, appreciate the presentation. And I think in some ways, for me, it, it was not what I expected. So it's, it's always good to get data because going on intuition sometimes of what you think might happen, you, you don't guess right and you don't, then you don't make the right decisions because it's based on faulty information. So I appreciate that. I also am concerned of just like who, who, who we have data about and who we don't and what the implications, what it implies for our ability to make the right decisions in terms of budgets and support academic and social emotional sports. A question about the, the students who weren't, or the, the grades that weren't looked at in this. This is the third to eighth grade set of students, correct?
Correct.
What are we, what are we going to have in terms of the snapshot of high school learning and then the sort of K two? I'm not suggesting a test, but what, how will we have like comparable data sets of where, where we should be starting? What programs we should be, you know, doubling down on?
So, you know, as we move into next year, again, I think it's going to be really important to get a baseline assessment at the start of the year. And, you know, we, we had set aside that the notion that we'd look at grades two through eight at the start of the year with the MAP assessment. So we'd have a common sort of benchmark to start from for that. You know, I, I agree wholeheartedly that the missing folks in this data are, are important. And I, I've tried to guess what that would mean for the system as a whole. But that doesn't detract from needing to, you know, engage with our students and understand their needs individually as we move forward. And, and for those students who didn't test right now, we've got an estimate of how they would do, but we really need to know where they are. So having an assessment at the start of the year, I think, is going to be incredibly important in, in grades two through eight. For high school, we're often looking at credit recovery and where, where, you know, what grades are students earning? Are they accruing credit in a timely fashion? You know, we'll, we'll be back hopefully in a, a regular SAT cycle as we move forward. Thankful to our schools who participated in, in the SAT today. We, we've had two SAT days this, this year to accommodate those students who wanted to participate in them. You know, we'll be back into a regular cadence of, of looking at post-secondary readiness indicators. In the early grades, you know, there, there's some back and forth, you know, kindergarten through second grade right now about what, which tools should be used in those grades. And that's a discussion still moving forward on that. But this idea of, of fairly quickly weaving assessment and as part of the instructional process to understand those students who are going to need additional supports to move forward is clearly part of our plan moving forward across particularly grades K through eight. And in the high school, it's really then looking at credit, credit accrual, credit recovery and those post-secondary pathways.
Do we do the deep dive? I know we have, we have the data of, you know, freshmen who have earned six credits and also the rates of Ds and Fs of students. Are we looking at that data?
We, we have looked at grades periodically during the course of the year. I think we had produced one, at least one report for the board about changes in grades for our high school students. It's absolutely something that we can look, look to as we move forward as well.
Then I guess my, my last question is for Superintendent Guerrero. This is less data, but so, so we have some data. And maybe this will lead into the larger budget discussion. But the summer school programming, you know, now that we have the data around math, are we, are we focusing more on math than reading? Or is it, we're still going to do what we, you know, that sort of a balance, more balanced program? Or what, what is, what is the data that got presented tonight tell you about what we should be doing and funding this summer? And then leading into this fall?
Yeah, there is actually a good flow to the agenda order this evening. Because given these observations and you're going to hear the team's initial thinking around the range of summer programming we want to offer. I know that you're seeing that there's a, a gap there with the mathematics that, that we want to sort of narrow. But we also want to remember that the summer is also about engaging our students and, you know, offering the enrichments and getting them connected back with being on campus and connecting with adults. And so, but you're going to hear, you know, the racial equity lens that we're trying to apply, not just in how we're targeted in, in, in summer programming, but also in how it shapes our budget proposal. We still have our theory of action. It's still focused on Black and Native. We think if we're targeted universalist, that, that improves the educational experience for, for all of our students. But, and, and, and I'm starting to lead into the intro I'm going to give you in that agenda item around how we continue to lean into our underserved school communities and, and students and how we keep differentiating supports to improve the conditions in those schools. And of course, as we move into a, you know, a full balanced assessment system, you know, a, a fall, winter and spring MAP assessment is going to be one important indicators. And there's going to be a lot of others, you know? And so we, we can look at sort of, you know, the deficit there, if you want to call it that, that we want to make up for. But also, you know, there's something that worked in these cautiously optimistic outcomes around reading and literacy. And so we're already asking good questions, you know, and a little bit of conjecture about what that is. Part of it is sort of just that, you know, the, the purposeful planning that, that comes with, you know, having groups of students that you're seeing every day and the connections that you're building. And maybe some, some real deliberateness there. But, you know, we, we, we can, we can keep going on that thread. But let's maintain this, this question around how do we differentiate our, our resources? Time, people, money to attend to, to students who are not yet at the grade level expectation that we know they're capable of? Because that's, that's which, those are exactly, that's exactly the lens that we should be applying to, to the conversation. So tonight's going to be that first high overview. You, you have a couple of really thick budget books. If you have time and you haven't, or you haven't yet, I invite you to read that front narrative because it tries to paint the story, the narrative, the journey that we're on and why we're sort of trying to address the immediate while we build the overall system's capacity to attend to, you know, perpetually students who, who not only need the supports and, and, and the acceleration, but also a fuller, high-quality educational program with all the enrichments in the school district that we talk about in, in our vision. So, and we're excited, you know, that a lot of that work is underway. I know we've been in a pandemic, but we're excited to tell you more about our curriculum adoptions, about our master arts program, about our middle school redesign. I mean, I could go down the list because staff's been working hard even during the school closure on, on many of those plans. So, and there's, there's been a lot of good work underway. So we're going to start to really talk more about those as you raise these questions. So I'll pause there because I know we're going to talk some more about this in, in the budget discussion as well. And then the summer learning one next.
Yeah, sorry, Superintendent Guerrero, this seems like a great moment to kind of move on to some of that summer learning that we're talking about and how we begin to think about those students we either didn't get testing from or those places where we would like to see continued growth. Are there any further questions about MAPS before we move on to our summer learning update?
No, I would just like to get the high school data again at some point when it's available, Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce summer learning?
I, I would. So many good topics this evening. And I just, for the record, not to point out the time, nine thirty, but more to say, the counsel that we're getting tonight from Mary Kane. She hasn't had to call us out or throw a flag or anything yet, so.
Are you inviting us to misbehave so that she doesn't work? Is that what you're asking, Superintendent?
I'm just complimenting directors on, on being, you know, really on task and asking good insightful questions.
There's a full load out.
Maybe we can make a motion and not vote on it or something.
All right, well, I, I'm excited to have the team, a whole cross-section of staff that is, is really excited about doing something really robust and different. And, you know, one, one little, my antennas went up when we talk about, and I hate to think of it this way, from a deficit orientation, sort of learning loss or where there's a gap. Because I don't want people to immediately equate that with like, oh, we need remediation. Like that should be the first thing, you know? And, and instead sort of reframe that a bit. And I know there's a lot of commentary out there and a lot of articles people are publishing on this, on this topic. But e- even though we've just reopened and, you know, things are underway and going relatively smoothly and we're already thinking about the closure of the academic year. And we talked about graduation briefly earlier and how we're looking forward to that. The team has been really busy thinking about the summer because we know we need to provide our students with additional opportunities, not just for academic acceleration and enrichment, but also mentorship and connections that will last beyond the summer and take them into supporting them for the school year. So there, there's quite an array of activities that, that are continuing to grow and build here. So I don't even think you're going to get the finite description. But I do want to also call out, there's an intentional understanding that there's a need and a focus to, to really apply resources to our theory of action around Black, Native, American, students of color who we know have been disproportionately impacted during this pandemic. So, and that's, and this planning is, is really requiring, as I mentioned, a lot of collaboration between our departments as well as our community-based partners as, as we think about reimagining what summer programming can look like. So tonight, we're going to hear from Dana Narenberg and her new role as Director of Learning Acceleration. So we're really happy to, to have her join the, the discussions here moving forward as, as well as Aurora Himmel. Have I ever gotten your last name straight?
Don't worry.
Our Senior Director of College and Career Readiness. And as well as Senior Advisor Danny Ledesma. Of course, we have a couple dozen staff in the virtual green room ready to pop in as we need them. So I'll stop there and let the team take it from here.
Thank you, Superintendent. And as Aurora eloquently always lets us know how to pronounce her name, she says it's He-Man, kind of like it's He-Mell. And that's how I always remember it was just based off the eighties iconic cartoon. So thank you for, for, for that explanation, Aurora. But good evening, directors, again. This is the exciting part that I know that we've all been waiting for. And I know that for a series of board meetings and just various meetings and conversations and discussions, you know, we always keep hearing the theme coming back to, you know, what is our learning acceleration plan? What are we thinking around summer programming? What do these options and opportunities look like for students? And so we're really excited to kick off this presentation to help contextualize the work in a little bit deeper. Throughout the school year, we've begun the process to really consider, you know, how do we meet the needs of all of our students? Specifically for, you know, our stu-, our BIPOC students, you know, our students with disabilities or merging bilingual students. As we start to think about what does learning acceleration look like? Especially as we're entering into the summer space. We know that this work, it's going to take, it, and it's, it's been heavy collaboration and will continue collaboration with a myriad of stakeholders and partners. You know, meeting with, with staff and families and students and our labor partners and making sure that we're working with, you know, very closely with our culturally specific, you know, organizations, which is part of the work as we're here to present it. And, and we're really excited because as a superintendent has always stated, now is the time for us to be innovative and, and now is the time for us to re, to really reinvent how it is that we do school. And, and, and I'm really, really excited as we really enter into this next phase, you know, of, of, of the work. So with that being said, I know that we don't need any introduction for Dana Narenberg. She was presented at the April thirteenth board meeting. We're really excited to have her on board. She has truly hit the ground running as she from day one has immersed herself in this work. And I'm really excited to hear Dana along with Dr. Himmel as well as Danny Ledesma, who will present the presentation. So with that being said, I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Himmel.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And thank you so much for all of your thoughtful questions throughout the evening. And hopefully we'll get to all of those. We are going to be sharing tonight a high-level overview of our planning process. And we are still in the planning process. We are going to present our summer plans as our best thinking for today. Because as you know, health guidelines are changing consistently. We, we're lucky enough to get new funding from the state. So that has really allowed us to open up our thinking and our opportunities for students. So we feel incredibly fortunate. opportunities for students. So uh, we feel incredibly fortunate to have this new funding um and this new focus on summer programming. And we also realize in our planning process that there's um still time and uh communities and stakeholder input that we need to get before we finalize our plans. And we are braiding this new funding with existing funding such as the SSA uh grant that uh Director Bryn Edwards uh referenced earlier this evening um to really uh think about a a holistic approach to our students this summer. And so really, of course, focusing on the academics, the math achievement, and also their social, emotional well-being. Um, and and really bringing back uh the joyful love of learning and really uh being safety con- conscious as we transition back into uh a full in-person learning and making that transition as we prepare for next fall. And so um as uh the Superintendent uh referenced earlier, we really um, there's so much more uh to our students than and just their uh math scores and and uh also to our community and the things that um are uh of value to our community. And so I'm just gonna turn it over for a minute for Danny to give us some local context before we uh dive into our current summer plans.
Uh, thanks, Dr. Himmel. Um, so uh, uh, good evening, Directors. It's nice to be able to to be here with you tonight. So so as you know, and we've talked about, this year has really presented significant challenges for our students, for our families, for our staff and our community. And as we are looking towards the close to another school year and starting to prepare for the summer and fall, we wanted to share some of our current thinking. Um, and and as you know, these challenges have really stretched everyone to their limits amidst a global pandemic. Local families, students and educators and partners have adapted in so many ways um and to so many changes while confronting health, economic and well-being challenges. Our country and our community have also had to confront our past and our present and a racial reckoning. And now our city of roses is forever changed. And our community has recently demonstrated how effective we can be when we work together. Through collaboration, we can make a difference in the lives of our young people who are also facing unprecedented rates of gun violence in our city right now. And as you heard from uh Director Constan, this is on the top of a lot of people's minds. And so after the year we've all experienced, we're focusing on continuing to work in collaboration and deepening those muscles, working in partnership to really meet the academic and social needs of our students and families. And so we're really trying to take a community-centered approach in developing plans for summer uh academic and enrichment programs that really engage students in safe, fun, creative activities. Research, as well as our lived experience, really tells us that when youth are engaged in these positive, safe and enriching activities with caring adults from their school community, with educators and with community partners, where their cultural identity is affirmed and their potential is really nurtured, that they will thrive. Research also tells us that resilient and safe communities invest in each other. We invest in community-based solutions that are implemented by our partners and also culturally-specific organizations. And for too long, investment really hasn't aligned with what we know works. And so this summer will be different. We are in a really fortunate uh position to be able to invest in what we know works and to bring back some balance. So this summer, our educators will will continue to partner with organizations like our SUN agencies, our culturally-specific and multiracial organizations who collectively understand the needs of our students and families. And we intend to leverage the state, the city and the county support by investing district resources towards academic and enrichment programs this summer with opportunities for youth employment as well. And we hope to continue to partner deeply with partners from other jurisdictions such as Port- Portland's Port- Port- uh, excuse me, Portland Parks and Recreation and potentially their Park Ranger Program. Our community is really focused on wanting to have a summer that's safe for our students. And we are really fortunate to live in a community where everyone wants to wrap around and really see success for our students this summer and begin to think about how not only do we do this safely within the context of COVID, but how we do it in a way that brings back interaction and fun and play in a way that really supports that academic uh hopes that we have for all of our students. So in considering learning acceleration, we're also making sure that it's aligned with our theory of action. And you'll hear us say, we are centering Black and Native American students because we know that if we collectively strengthen our our muscles in order to address the needs of Black and Native students, that we'll have the skills, we'll be be able to develop and build the skills to address the learning needs of other diverse student groups, including language learners, students who experience poverty and houselessness, Latinx students, Pacific Islanders, Asian students and students experiencing disabilities. So we're really thrilled to be able to to be here with you tonight and to be able to to present some of our early thoughts and hopes for the summer. And so I'm really thrilled. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with Dana Narenberg uh prior to her new role, and I'm really thrilled to be able to work with her in her in her role now. Um, and so I'm going to hand that over and she's uh, it's it's been really great. And so take it away, Dana.
Thanks, Danny. Good evening, Directors. Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero. If we can move forward a couple of slides, please. Just one more, please, to the next one. Thank you. So I'm so excited to present our evolving thinking and planning for learning acceleration. And I'm thrilled to be in this role because I believe that our learning acceleration work is an amazing opportunity to reimagine and renew our existing commitments and values. And learning acceleration is a powerful lever to empower our students to achieve our vision and the elements of the graduate portrait. Um, some of our core values really come to the top in thinking about this work, specifically students at the center, joyful learning and leadership, relationships and partnerships and collaboration. And these values inform several of our PPS priorities, of which learning acceleration is a through line. Look forward to helping integrate the work, the key work that our district is focusing on because we know that our system is stronger when there's strong alignment, coherence and collaboration across all departments and school sites. And this really aligns to some of our strategic work, including our strategic planning and system shifts, our P three work, our middle school redesign, our high school success plan, our work with MTSS, and of course, our guaranteed and viable curriculum as well as ongoing professional learning. If we can move to the next slide, please. We and we know that our words matter. This graphic comes from our Oregon Department of Education. Throughout all of our work, we want to ensure that our values are explicit and our approach is clear. And to that end, we are all committed to creating a common lexicon to shift the narrative away from assumed deficits and towards language that is inclusive and affirms a cultural identity, lived experience and assets of every student. And by reframing this language of learning loss to unfinished learning, we pave a path forward. By shifting from remediation to the more empowered language of acceleration, we are ready to respark the love of learning for our students. And in considering renewal rather than recovery, we're eager to infuse our district's existing work with our racial equity and social justice lens to leverage our partnerships with the community and our educators to the lens of learning acceleration. And for summer, we're focusing on the frame of create, learn and play. And this approach to accelerated learning considers the whole child. I'm going to go ahead and share a quick retell of a a children's book that came out in the past few years written by Asian-American author Dan Santat, and the title is After the Fall. And this text is a real inspiration for the notion of learning acceleration. It's a retelling of the traditional Humpty Dumpty story, but it picks up after he's had his fall. And after he's put together, we usually don't hear what happened to him. And we usually focus on the negative of his fall. Um, and in this context, like I said, we learned about what happens afterwards. We learned that afterwards, we learned why he was on the wall in the first place, and that's because he loved watching the birds and connecting to the birds and spending time looking at them. After he fell, he experienced a lot of anxiety and stress. He was so nervous about getting up that he slept on the floor. He didn't even want to be on his bed, just a few feet off the floor. But over time, he with determination and resolve and think he was and enthusiasm for his passion around the birds, he finally braved and built his stamina up and his confidence up and climbed back on the wall. And when he got up there, he experienced the great joy of being able to watch the bo- the birds. And most importantly, upon pausing there for a moment, he hatched and he emerged as a bird. And this inspires us to think about how our student, about our students. And we need to know them as individuals, their passions, their interests, the barriers that make things hard for them and empower them to know their powers, aspirations and unlock their potential. And through enrichment and empowerment, find their aspirations. Next slide, please. So with that, I present our draft definition, our working definition of learning acceleration. So learning acceleration in PPS is an intentional implementation of a set of strategies intended to leverage students' assets, strengths and gifts in order to accelerate their learning, provide access to unfinished learning and move every student towards mastery of key grade level standards and skills. Next slide, please. And this definition is inspired by the research, and this is not presented in any particular order, but here are the emerging priorities. It's a collection of strategies that intersect to create accelerated learning for students. So first of all, every student needs access to grade level learning and relationships matter. We really need to make the most of extended learning time, thinking about summer, after-school and weekends. And most importantly, those learning opportunities need to be of high quality. High dosage tutoring, there's a lot of emerging research around this strategy as one that can be really powerful for helping students continue to accelerate their learning. And of course, continue with our district commitment that Danny so thoughtfully described, really centering our Black and Native American students, as well as our students who experience disability and our language learners, given the disproportionate outcomes for these students. And the map data that Dr. Brown just presented um that was gathered during the midst of the pandemic reaffirms our need to focus on instructional opportunities for our Black and Indigenous students. And the data collected shows the the trends that we've seen nationally. Um, and we know that based on that data, the progress in reading remained relatively steady, and our students didn't make as much progress in math. But we want to continue to provide opportunities to accelerate learning for our students in these areas. And if we're able to close opportunity gaps for our students, particularly our Black and Native American students, as they progress towards the vision of a graduate portrait, we'll be able to raise the bar for all of our students. Most importantly, it's important, most importantly, we can think about how we accelerate learning in the moment with that access to grade level learning, thinking about the key skills our students need for grade level mastery.
So when we go back to to the, first of all, let's go to the next slide. And so when we go back to the theory of action, uh, this summer, we are braiding racial justice strategies into the instructional corps to promote learning, creativity and summer engagement. We believe that with an intensive focus this summer, we can really catalyze learning for the fall. And this summer, we'll braid a series of research-driven strategies to design student learning, professional development opportunities. And these strategies show show up throughout our programming and design and have been proven to be effective in serving students of color.
And the strategies, I'll describe the academic strategies that are part of our learning acceleration plan so far, one of which is the summer learning. Um, so we're thinking about how we can create expanded and supplemental learning opportunities, including summer and Saturday programs, engaging cross-curricular learning experiences for our students, and thinking about how we can integrate our academics into project-based learning through our SUN partnerships, high dosage tutoring, and really thinking about the lessons learned from distance learning. Continuing to build our educators' capacity through professional development in domains such as social, emotional learning, as well as standards-based instruction. And then also continuing to develop culturally-responsive curriculum and instruction. Again, thinking about how we can apply the lessons that we all learned this year from distance learning to create even new newer, more empowering learning opportunities.
So when we think about our racial equity and social justice partnership strategies, uh, we're thinking about how do we really partner with culturally-specific and multiracial organizations? Organizations who have demonstrated commitment and expertise in specific community accountability to the org- to the communities that they're they're serving uh has been really shown to prove particularly in Portland that we can really accelerate learning and accelerate social gains for our students of color. Uh, we also know that exten- extended learning and enrichment, the ability to offer fun and engaging activities that really spark a uh an interest, a curiosity, getting students interested in specific fields of study and also potential career places, uh career goals is a way to really accelerate learning as well. And we also know that relationships really matter. Relationships can be really critical in being able to prevent uh a a host of terrible things for our students. And so we want to make sure that when we think about a summer of activities, a summer that's safe and enriching, that we're thinking about how these strategies are specifically proven to be effective for students of color.
Next slide, please. So now, what you all have been waiting for in terms of summer programming, we're really excited to launch our learning acceleration work this summer under the umbrella of create, learn, play. And here you'll see by age group, the offerings for students across grade levels, starting in kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And this focuses on the academic domains. So this summer, we'll be providing academic opportunities for students through both familiar and new programs. So we're continuing with our very successful early kindergarten transition program, expanding to include first graders who may never have set foot in our school buildings before, and we'll be hosting this at fifteen sites. We're also excited to host, for the first time in many years, academic programming for rising second through eighth graders with sixty hours of programming focusing focusing on social, emotional learning, literacy, mathematics and hands-on learning through project-based themed programming. Students will be able to access full days of programming as we partner with SUN at each of these twenty-three sites. While our school teams will identify priority students who mostly need an on-ramp for the fall, we're pleased to be able to offer spots to students from each school in the district. We're also expanding our successful summer scholars program to provide opportunities at five sites, expanding from this typical single site at Benson for credit completion for our high school students. And we're excited to continue to offer programs, including, of course, extended school year, migrant education programs, leap into ninth grade and our academic sports program for middle schoolers. These academic offerings provide students with opportunities to create and learn, and Danny will share more about our plans around other elements of summer offerings.
So the same way that you see that the academ- if we can go to the next slide, the academic offerings um have elements of uh extended learning and enrichment. The uh enrichment and extended learning elements also have ac- uh academic components, the potential for academic components. So as we talked about before, our community is really facing unprecedented surges in gun violence. And we know that uh particularly our Black Indigenous and students and families of color are tend to be uh disproportionately vulnerable to the impact of this violence. And leaders are particularly worried about our ser- their students during the summer because public safety officials predict that this violence will likely continue to increase during the summer months. And so we know that research shows that students who are engaged in positive and eh positive and safe activities is a powerful way to prevent violence. We also want to make sure that not only are we working uh with our educators, but that we're partnering with cultural culturally-specific organizations, organizations who demonstrated an ability to have uh culturally-relevant act, uh culturally-relevant uh enrichment activities and who can also keep our students safe. We want to also encourage youth employment activities and are working with partners to provide resilient community um community this summer to prevent violence. So one of the things that we're doing is that we're going to, uh, and you've heard about this, is that we've released a request for proposals from across um from across our community to be able to uh fill out the other side of programming around enrichment for the summer. So we go into the next slide, you can see that this will really be a complement to uh all of the academic um and enrichment activities that are offered in accelerated learning, but also that we can offer a full and really robust catalog of um activities for students, so that we can give students and families options so they can explore and they can find uh and they can, they can sort of di- dive into their curiosity this summer. Um, we really are uh in terms of the number of students that we anticipate serving, it's still a work in progress. Uh, in the create and play buckets, uh, we hope that there's really a myriad of opportunities for students. Um, not only are we going to, eh, not only do we anticipate increased SUN programming for academics in the morning and enrichment in the afternoon, we also an- anticipate that there'll be increased access for childcare uh camps through our licensed childcare providers and potential and and a really a lot of robust uh potential for summer arts. Um, there is a lot of anticipation in the community about what we're, what we hope to uh be able to provide for students. And our expectation is that families will see, create, learn and play really come to life this summer at PPS. Um, we gave you a lot of information. Um, and um, we are going to continue to do that. Um, but really, we want to um see how we can really support this um in communicating this to uh our families in the future. Um, and so our, we're in the middle of our RFP process. So uh proposals are due uh in May, and then we hope to be able to turn turn around very quickly and be able to publish our offerings uh very soon for the public. So like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress. I'm going to turn it back over to Dana, who's gonna sort of show how it all comes together.
Yeah, thank you. If we could go to the next slide, please. So as we close, we have exciting plans for the near future through the summer to spark creativity, learning and play through throughout the summer as we launch our learning acceleration work. And we're very excited to renew and reimagine and learning through this lens, catalyzing opportunities for learning in the fall by offering safe and engaging learning opportunities for students across our school system. So that's our presentation for you. Wondering, I want to open up to questions, wonderings and feedback. Thank you.
Can I just say, I love that Dana, the questions, wonderings and feedback. That's such a beautiful framing of our conversation. So directors, I see Director Bailey has unmuted himself. Do you have a question, wondering or feedback?
Feedback, this is great. This is something that, you know, we've been talking about about day two since superintendent came to do this kind of extended learning and to see such a robust and deep set of offerings is fabulous. And just as kind of in my neck of the woods, I was just referencing some a, a study of youth employment programs that basically said the specific program design really doesn't matter. They just work and works so positively. So I'm very happy to see that be a part of the program. But the, you know, all, all the way from that down to the kindergarten transition, expanding to include first graders. Great. That's wonderful. You know, we've seen how effective that program is. So I'm just really heartened.
I'm excited to see all the opportunities for our students. And again, I love that reframing of instead of thinking about this as learning loss, that pause in learning and continued learning is really great. So I appreciate that sort of hopeful opportunity for our students to engage in these programs. Other questions, wonderings or feedback, Director?
Yeah, I had a quick comment slash question about what criteria you used. I know we lead with race and we, we talk about, you know, applying the racial equity lens to the locations where we'll be offering these extended learnings. And by the way, I'm very excited about all of this too. I think it's fabulous. I, I, I wish that we had Saturday school all the time. And, and some cultures do. Half day. Have we partnered? So one of the questions is how we applied the racial equity lens and how we would expect to see that in terms of the locations. And the other question I have is about if we've engaged with the Saturday Academy, which is an awesome program, but as a single parent, I, I used it at a time when I wasn't working full-time, but program is only a couple of hours a day. But they have amazing STEAM offerings. So I wonder if we've partnered with them or looked at their model or even talked to the ED, Jackie.
So as to the locations, I, I would say that part of the, part of the selection of the locations was in sort of looking at how we equitably distribute programming across the city with the constraint that there are some buildings that are going to be under construction and some buildings that'll be, be utilized for other things this summer. So I think, you know, we definitely did try to apply that lens, you know, recognizing that there, there are, there are constraints.
And to follow up on your question, your question about student selection, so of course using the racial equity and social justice lens, but also turning it over to our teachers who, after their families, know our students best in terms of their, their learning. And so we're, I've been working with our MTSS department to create guidance for sit teams and for PLCs to engage in some intentional conversation around who are the students who may not have been as engaged in the learning this year or students who might already be receiving interventions or students who may have some identified needs, both planning to provide opportunity to fill some of those needs, but also really provide an exciting on-ramp into the fall. And then in terms of Saturday Academy, I don't know if they've, Danny, I don't know if they've applied for the RFP. And so we can certainly look out, look to connect with them. That's a great suggestion.
Um, I, I just, I had a conversation about two months ago with the ED, who's one of the people that started, was literally in my living room planning the first March on Science about four years ago. And she was at OHSU at the time, Dean of Students and has shifted now to the ED of, of Saturday Academy and are trying to provide more equitable programming. And I think it would be great just to have a conversation. They do want to serve more kids of color than they're currently serving and they have amazing offerings, really great classes in robotics, et cetera. And, and yeah, they would be a great community partner, I suspect.
Any other questions or comments from board members before we move on? Okay, I see that. The Julia, Amy, and then Nathaniel. So Rita, go first.
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up on the question about who participates. So am I hearing you right that students are going to be sort of invited to participate? And will there be any possibility for someone who isn't invited to participate in any of these programs?
So in terms of our Summer Acceleration Academy for second through eighth graders, along with EKT and our EKT for first graders, we are looking to invite students who, who met, who best match the criteria for need in terms of what the programming is offering. We are offering spots for the second through eighth graders for students from every school in our, in our district, which is a really exciting model, but we are using an equity model to allocate those spots. For the summer scholars, it's a credit, credit completion model. And so that's the criteria for students to participate. That being said, if we look at this, I guess you guys don't have the slides in front of you anymore, but that last slide with all of the myriad of partnerships that we hope to explore through the racial equity and social justice RFP, we look to be able to serve a wide variety of students through those programs. As well as there's continued childcare camps at many of our campuses that'll be continuing as well.
Okay, thank you. At, at the high school level, it looks like this is, well, okay, let me put this in the form of a question. Historically, credit recovery programs have been, the, the hub has been at Benson. And this year it looks like it's distributed more at the neighborhood high schools. Are you thinking that this may be the first step in a new model for the credit recovery system? Have you thought that far ahead? Or am I jumping again?
Well, Dr. Moore, I think that this is a great incubation summer while we have the, the funding and the fresh ideas. So I don't know that we've, that we're ready to commit, but we'll definitely get the opportunity to experience the summer scholars across the city this summer.
And, and Rita, I want to say that at our next Charter and Alternative Programs Committee meeting, we're going to talk about some of the innovations in multiple pathways to graduation and get into a little bit more detail on how virtual scholars may be, maybe evolving, not just to meet this immediate need for this summer, but, but over the long term. So keep an eye out for that.
Director Moore, I just, I just, I just want to, you know, just add a little bit to that. You know, one of the things that we did start the presentation with is that, you know, this is really more of an in-depth look at summer. But, you know, as we get into the course of the summer, we're going to continue these conversations. As the superintendent alluded, you know, we don't really have to keep having these hybrid conversations as we are back in school. And now the conversation and the focus shifts to what we're doing around learning acceleration. And, and right now the focus is summer, but, but I, we can, we can, you know, really be sure that throughout the course of the summer, we're going to continue to re-engage these conversations and start really looking at what does fall learning acceleration look like? And then what are we also looking at? You know, we are looking at this lens now that it's just for the summer of half, but now what does it look like 12 months from now? And so that's all going to be part of future conversations. And I think you're asking the right question because that's also part of our planning for the fall in terms of how do we expand some of those specific programs that we've seen tremendous value from our students in. So that's, that's, so stay tuned. More, more exciting news to be shared.
Okay, thank you. And I'm feeling acutely the, the waning days of my tenure on the board. So I'm sort of feeling compelled to weigh in while I can. And in this sense, I will weigh in and say that the credit recovery system is vastly better than it used to be, but it needs a lot of work. And, and I see this as a, a step in what I suspect may be the right direction. So I would encourage you to take this as an opportunity to, you know, pilot some things and, and make some real changes for the future. Okay. And I guess my last thing is a lot of this, you know, when the presentation started, it was framed in terms of kind of building on the lessons learned from distance learning. And this might be a bigger question than you can answer tonight. But my ultimate question is, what were the lessons that were learned during distance learning? And you might not be able to rattle them off right now, but I think it would be very helpful if, if you could compile at least a, you know, kind of preliminary guess at what we've learned. And, you know, you can link it with the data that we heard about from the MAP tests and at this stage, it might be speculation more than anything else. But I, I do think it would be helpful to, to lay out it however you can, with as much, with, with whatever degree of confidence you can have about what you think we learned. And then I, I think it would be helpful to lay out some hypotheses that, that the district and the board can go back and, and talk about as time goes on. I think it would be very helpful to, to kind of sort of codify what, what happened. I mean, this was a hell of a year, year and a half, actually. And I, I would like to think that it was not for naught. So it would be helpful if you could kind of memorialize some of the lessons, some of the ideas, some of the, some of the examples that you might want to amplify going forward. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. I think I said Julia next. Dr. Brim Edwards, what are your questions?
Great, thank you. So this is a topic I've been interested in a long time. First started as a parent, looking for something to help a student catch up. And, you know, basically for 10 years, the only thing I can find was it either into the spectrum, either if you were sort of in the kinder program or in need of high school credit recovery and summer scholars has changed over the years. So I'm really glad to see sort of the filling in at the middle, which is super important. And I love that the world word play is in there, even if there's a lot of academics, like you gotta add some plan there, otherwise like no kid is going to want to sign up for something or have their parents sign up for something. So I really love that element of it and hope that that is sort of the spark of the kid's day. And then they also get the, the things they need. So a couple of questions that I have specifically. In the past, there has been a fee for summer scholars. Is that still going to be the case? Cause that was just like one of the barriers for, for some students to take classes.
And that is one of the elements that I dearly hope we're going to change.
Does Lidesma do have a response to that question or someone else?
I don't believe so. I mean, I, I think part of the investment is to, to make sure that we can kind of create equitable opportunities for all, all of our students. But we can, we can double check and make sure that we're not speaking out of turn.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that.
Also, that's absolutely at the heart of the intention of the Essar funds that we'll be receiving. So I would think we could say unequivocally that there wouldn't be a fee for credit recovery.
Well, somebody could, somebody could circle back. That would be great.
I will, I will say, Director Brim Edwards, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off, but I, I do know at least for the purpose of this conversation for summer learning, no fees. I mean, that is the intention of what we are doing is no fees for the summer for, for any of our students. And that's, you know, we've been very deliberate in, in, in doing that. Now, speaking for fall and beyond, again, there's still a lot more conversation and planning that has to take place. Specifically what, what, what Ms. Lidesma has stated, you know, and we can talk about that. But if we're talking about specific just for summer, you know, that has been our commitment from day one as we started to look at this, we started to look at the planning and the work is no fees for summer.
Okay, well, we should make that crystal clear, like no material fees, textbook fees. Because, because that has not been PBS's history in the past and it has been a barrier for a lot of students. So I think we should just be clear about that. And it was that if you failed a class, there in a high school class, you couldn't retake it at your high school and then you had to take it at summer scholars and pay for it. So it was just this bad cycle. So the, then the other question is how are parents going to know? We've talked about it being invitation. And so at this point in time, you know, word will start to get out. What, what's the mechanism? If somebody says, hey, I've heard that there's going to be summer programming, do we say, consult your teacher, I mean, I'm sorry, consult your, the principal at your school or where, where are we sending people? And what, in what form will the invitation come?
Thanks for that question. And can I just add one tiny piece about the credit completion? We're also really pushing for our summer completion camp, which will happen mostly at your local high school very soon after school gets out. So mid-June with the hope being that students can get that credit completed as close to finishing that course in their local school, maybe even mitigating the need for summer scholars for some of those students at all.
It's not even doing a, a complete do-over. It's just getting that last bit of work.
We're really excited about that. In terms of how families will know, working on this, this is very much in process. So we're designing an invitation that school teams would extend to families with a registration form. We're working to partner that so that the SUN registration happens right there. So it's a one-stop shop for families. Of course, making it available in paper and online in all of our languages for our families. And so those would come, not unlike how the Lippi invitations went out perhaps from schools. And then also providing schools guidance around how to communicate and message that to, to families around this part of our summer options. Our subsequent summer options will be coming out with a menu and a catalog. We've brainstormed, of course, using the internet, but even creating a poster so that the kids can learn about all of the range of options to really be excited to, to, to engage in those once those have been identified and confirmed. And we're working on our family-facing website to add that information as well.
Great. I love all those things. And then the last question is, assuming that we trend in the right direction, we have in-person classes. But even with that, if say even the external health conditions are all, we feel very comfortable having in-person learning, well, there, there's always, there's probably going to be a cohort of families that for, for whatever reason, aren't going to be comfortable still this summer. Is there going to be a, a virtual option? I know like at the high school level, you probably have virtual scholars, but what about the sort of K8 spectrum?
So virtual scholars will be operating all summer long as an option. We're also exploring creating a hub site that would be a distance learning option for students. Again, focusing on students who would most benefit from this resource, not opening it up to the, to every student across our district. But knowing that if we want to welcome families back, we also want to honor that there were some families who were not yet comfortable coming back. So we're in the planning phase on that. It will not be how it is right now where every local school is offering both in-person and distance learning. Rather, it would be a centralized distance learning option for second through eighth grade. The early kindergarten transition and the first grade program are really best achieved in that local school. Kindergartners learning the hallways, learning their way around the playground. So that first day of school, they own the place. And so that would be successful. Yeah.
Great. Those are my questions. I really appreciate it. I'm super excited because this will have a potentially huge impact for, for students.
Director Comstam, I think you are next on my list.
Thank you. So Ms. Narenberg, you just touched on it, but with the EKT program and first grade program, so am I correct that there are no options for our littlest kids who are not in those 15 target schools?
There will be through childcare and also potentially through the RFP. Many of our childcare providers are, are leaning into the RFP. So there may be additional opportunities available for those.
And I get the, I get that a big part of that is actually acclimating kids to their own building, which is I guess probably why it's not a hub model like the rest of the grade levels. Okay. I also had a question, Danny, about the summer enrichment and safety RFP. So I can't remember from looking back at that, but is there a possibility for athletics programs to be responsive to that RFP? Cause there, we're, we're a little, talk about things that are compelling for kids to come back and engage in. It seems to me we're a little bit light on athletics in this portfolio.
Yeah, I think that there's, you know, we, we really asked our partners to be as creative as possible.
Yeah, I think that there's, um, you know, we, we're, we really asked our partners to be as creative as possible to sort of think about kind of like what is, you know, what's of interest, uh, to, to them and also what's of interest, what likely be of interest to students. So, um, we've also really wanted to think about like the time span. Um, so you know, when we think about like what's a, what's, you know, what are, what, what can you do, eh, eh, you know, across six hours? Um, there's got to be some active part of that, some active play. So I anticipate that we'll probably have a lot of, um, sort of like activities that, that incorporate both learning, enrichment and, and athletics, the arts. I, I've, um, I'm pretty excited. We had a pretty robust group of folks who came to our first, um, meeting and, you know, we had a lot of arts organizations there. Um, so I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get a pretty diverse group of folks.
It's really exciting because, um, you know, when we talk about looking at this as incubating things that we may take forward and, and that might inform our whole system. I mean, we're, we're really expanding our opportunity for different kinds of partnerships, um, which is really exciting. Um, okay. Nuts and bolts question is, so will there be transportation to the hubs for the, for the two through eight students?
Yes, we are in conversation with transportation on the logistics of that and, and, um, our transportation department are just brilliant in terms of all the things they're able to figure out. And so we're still trying to figure out the details of that. Um, our hope is that we're able to offer transportation, of course, in the morning. And then also an option midday and an option for after the sun programming to offer families maximum flexibility. That's a hope that is not a, that is not a firm offer, um, commitment yet. And we would use the same criteria that we use during the home, during the school year for the hub sites, so that one mile radius. And then working with our transportation department on routes. Um, one small caveat is that for families, we're going to give them a deadline to commit to, to coming to, in order to assure transportation. You know, we can't do a last minute change, um, when we've got such a complex system.
Yeah. Um, okay. And then superintendent, maybe this question is for you, but I'm just really curious about how the staffing is going to work. Like is our capacity for all of these programs, the programs we administer, not our partner programs, dependent upon, um, how many of our teachers and substitutes opt into these roles?
Well, you know, the good thing is, you know, we have a, a variety of, um, funding streams and resources we're able to braid together here. So I just want to call out what you're noticing that, you know, when you combine some strategic thinking, a little design, uh, and some imagination, you can see what's possible. So hopefully this is the case for, you know, resourcing K-12 to be able to continue to do things like this. What one, one constraint here, you know, what you're calling out is sort of, there's, there's human capital component to doing all of this work. And I would say not just for PPS staff, uh, participating in programming, but you know, our partners also have to ramp up and, and have capacity and, and be able to provide a quality program that they're interested in providing. So I think everybody is sort of, uh, you know, we, we, we want to extend ourselves as much as we can actually provide the programming. So we are hoping, uh, that we'll have educators, you know, who, who are interested in making that commitment. The good thing is with the variety of programming, you know, there's different options depending on, on how much time, uh, folks want to commit to, uh, for the summer, but I'll, I'll invite the, the team if, if you want to say anything else about how you're thinking about the staffing for the variety of all this programming.
Sure. So we've already begun the hiring process. The positions are posted, um, and we're, we're, we're doing interviews. I just did one today for a teacher from out of district and a few other positions. Uh, you know, we're hoping that our own PPS teachers will be eager to teach their students at the hub sites, but we also will welcome in guest teachers or teachers from other districts. And we are compensating them at their annual regular salary, which is different from how summer programming has been compensated in the past. In the past, teachers have been paid a flat rate and they're now going to be paid at their regular salary, which is a nice bump for most of our teachers. Um, and so that's a way of honoring the commitment to come and, and work. Um, we're also working to make sure that the instructional programming is really good and fun to teach and educative so that they continue to grow their practice as they engage in the teaching. And so I had a really terrific conversation today with our humanities team about really how we envision our cross-curricular units and our, and our curriculum integration. And, and these teachers can be pioneers and really leaders in that work. And so, um, we might not have an excess of teachers, but I'm really feeling hopeful that by encouraging them to apply and principals really promoting it, maybe some of our younger teachers or our newer teachers. I mean, many of our teachers haven't had that full class experience. And so they may be, they, you know, they might be eager to have that opportunity. Um, so we're really excited and optimistic.
Uh, I'm glad to hear that. And I, I, I don't, I don't mean to sound like the, the devil's advocate here, but, um, ultimately our offerings will expand or contract based on the availability, the availability of our teaching force, right? In terms of the number of students, not our offerings in terms of the ri- variety of offerings, but in terms of the number of students we're able to serve.
Yes. And our teachers are having a terrific time being back in person with our children. And, and the joy of being a teacher and connecting with students in person is, is, is just, that's why our teachers become teachers. And so I'll tell you, I've got my, my DLI pals, um, you know, I was a DLI principal. They want to offer programming in Spanish. They say, you find the teachers and they are finding the teachers. Um, there are some sites who want to offer more spots. They say, if you can help find the teachers, we will be able to deliver it. So I think it's a real collective effort, um, and, and to make that happen, but I, I'm feeling hopeful.
That's great. That's great. Okay. One last question, which is we, I saw a little mention to high dosage tutoring and we know that, um, this is a, a principal strategy for a lot of other districts around the country. Um, but it wasn't exactly clear to me what that looks like, uh, here for us.
Hi, Director Constan. I think right now we're still, uh, working on the full details of that, of how that will expand into the school year. Um, this summer, we are looking, uh, at that high dosage tutoring to be through our letters program, through our humanities department and, and really having our, uh, uh, the teachers who are going through the letters training to be doing that one-on-one tutoring. Uh, so they're learning the program as they're tutoring the students. So that's, um, one of the ideas we have for.
That is fantastic because that's professional development that we can keep with us.
Exactly.
All of our aspiring readers for years to come.
So that's our, that's one of our summer plans and we're still in the process of fleshing out what that will look like for the school year.
Great. Thanks, everybody. What a exciting opportunity to get to do all these things from scratch and to be creative and to have the resources to support our kids who we know need it most. And, um, this is just really, really exciting and I know going to be so, uh, well-received by our grateful community and all those happy kids.
Yeah, it's amazing. Uh, all right. Nathaniel, I saw that you had a question as well.
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple. Uh, first, uh, for the programs that are, uh, allow those not specifically selected to enter, do we expect that we can meet the student demand? And if not, how will space be allocated?
So for the programs that are, uh, you know, sort of gone through the RFP, I think that we're hoping to meet quite a bit of demand there. Um, and I think that the students, the, the way that we're envisioning it is that students will be really selecting and opting into those programming. So we'll partner with our partners on, uh, sort of, eh, eh, marketing and outreach. But it'll be sort of like, you know, each, each organization will have their own enrollment and, and, you know, sort of when it gets filled up, they'll let us know. And then folks will have to select something else.
Did you have another question, Nathaniel? I thought you said you had two.
Yeah. Um, also I'm concerned that there are a not insignificant number of high schoolers out there who are not in need of credit recovery, who did just fine in their classes, but still did not get nearly as much out of this year academically as they would have had the pandemic not happened. I wonder if we're doing anything to support such students.
Uh, I anticipate that through our RFP, that there will be a lot of interest in serving high school students. Um, that's where I anticipate we'll have a lot of, uh, connection to career exploration. Also the, um, connection to youth employment. Um, some of the, some of the sort of questions that we had at our RFP meeting were, you know, sort of, could we employ a student to direct a play? Could we employ a student to be an artist in residence? So I think that the, our partners are thinking, because of the emphasis that we've placed on youth employment, our, um, our partners are thinking about sort of how to, how to really connect the student enrichment experience to employment and to career exploration as well. Which Dr. Hummel can talk a lot about.
Well, I'll, I'll just add one more program that we're really working to expand is, uh, the Summer Works Program that, uh, provides paid internships for the summer for students. And so we're actually looking at, uh, tripling, uh, the, uh, the amount of interns that, um, not just our district hosts, but the city of Portland itself hosts. So that's another opportunity for students that we're really working on that is targeted specifically to our high school students.
That's fantastic.
So just along that lines, I know last summer, um, that for example, at Roosevelt, they had a combination. It was a really cool, like, um, middle grades, basketball plus, um, intensive math acad- academy. It was a very interesting combination, but it was great because there was a whole bunch of, um, Roosevelt High School students who, um, were like assistant coaches and in the classrooms. Is that the type of thing you're thinking about?
Yes. And we're, we are, uh, expanding that program as well to also, um, be at McDaniel High School this summer. So that's a great example of, uh, what the, the student interns through the Summer Works Program do. That's right.
That's great. It was students were super engaged.
Excellent. I think we've been seeing some of our Summer Arts Academy during the breaks today. Um, so that's also exciting, um, to remember the things we have done and know that we're building on and continuing, uh, to do amazing things. Any further questions before we thank this team and move on to our last agenda item?
Can I just say something that I should have started my comments with? Um, thank you for all of this. This sounds great. Um, it, it is so exciting. It sounds, it sounds like you have really sort of busted out of a box and you're just trying to think of stuff and it all sounds great. So thank you.
And again, once again, you know, commending our team, um, especially the three of you for working on such a short timeline. Um, that, you know, we've known that we wanted to do something in the summer, but knowing that we were getting money and what that would look like and some of those ramifications, I know, um, seems to constantly update and change. So thank you for the work you've done in a, in a quite, um, moving target sort of environment. So thank you all. All right. Well, we have one more item left on our, um, agenda item. It is very late. We are, um, oh, like an hour, two hours. We're exactly two hours behind schedule. So I think what I'm going to ask, um, having sort of checked in with some of our staff is that we'll do this budget presentation and we'll ask board members, um, to, um, make a list of your questions. Um, staff is tired as well and we want them to be able to answer your questions to the best of their abilities. So if we could do those questions in writing after the presentation, so that that way we're, um, getting the best, most robust answers to our questions. I think that would be much appreciated both by board members and by staff. Um, and we, we will have, um, town halls and other public commentary times and times for board members to ask questions again as well. So we'll, we'll entertain a couple of questions after the presentation, but ask that the majority of them please be in writing so that our staff can answer those, um, to the fullest of their ability when they, now at the end of a, let's see, many of you started your workday at seven this morning. So we're on hour 15 of your workday. So I know that I don't give my best self or my best answers in hour 15. So Superintendent, I'll turn this, um, over to you now and would you please introduce the budget?
Uh, I will. And, and thanks for recognizing, uh, it's, it's been a lengthy day. It's been a, a pretty meaty, uh, agenda tonight. Great discussion. Um, and, uh, we also have an important process here with our budget development. So, uh, this is just, you know, the next step. And there'll be many additional opportunities. And of course, uh, want to make sure we, we answer all of our directors' questions. So, uh, we'll certainly be continuing to gather those. And I think it's been customary for us to keep a running Q and A going. Um, so to, tonight we're being joined in, in PPS induction fashion, you know, of folks coming in running, uh, with our chief financial officer, Alberto Delgado. Uh, you know, in addition to the long workday, uh, he has a time zone difference. So it's, uh, getting close to 1:00 AM for him. Uh, and, uh, Danny is also doing triple duty here. So she's also, uh, a key part of, of the presentation this evening. Um, hopefully what you'll, you'll see, uh, moving forward is, is our attempt to be really mindful of our priorities in this budget, uh, that they continue to fuel, uh, movement forward, uh, towards our, our vision. Uh, and, and those goals ultimately, you know, that our board has set aside for, for student outcomes and, uh, building capacity across the organization. So, uh, I'll, I'll try to keep my preambles, you know, as a bridge as possible, but hopefully what you start to see, uh, a picture being painted is, you know, organizational capacity building, continuing to, to move forward, that, uh, the investment in talent and direct services of our students and, and our schools. Uh, critical, even as we come out of this pandemic, that we haven't lost sight of, you know, keeping our eye on the prize. So, uh, and it's a budget that supports our commitment to racial equity. Uh, so, and there's been collaboration, you know, at different points with stakeholders and community, uh, keeping, um, those students in mind and, and their success. So we're going to transition over to, uh, a budget presentation. Uh, so we do have some slides for you. So I'll, I'll kick it off initially, uh, just to give a little bit, uh, of an overview, then I will turn it over to, to our CFO. Uh, so there's, there's kind of two halves here or, or a, a little bit of an intro by me. Uh, so the next slide, just, just sort of the, the general approach for, for this evening here. Um, and how we're looking at this, you just heard me describe a little bit, what's different about, uh, this budget, uh, proposal is, you know, it's being prepared during an unusual chapter in our, in our school district's history. Um, so, you know, you have over a year of closed schools, uh, a reliance on changing our delivery model to distance learning for the most part because of this pandemic and, you know, the, the gradual reopening of our classrooms. Um, so as, as we're working our way out of this pandemic and hopefully it does start to trend back downwards, uh, and we deal with the impacts, uh, but also be forward-thinking, uh, about the kind of programming and experiences that our kids have. Uh, we hope that this budget, you know, you know, addresses, uh, some of those needs and, and demands that the pandemics has, has brought, uh, upon us, but also keeps us aligned on that core mission and it's consistent with our values. Um, so, uh, and we have an opportunity with some significant new resources, uh, coming our way. So some of these might be one time, uh, but how do we leverage those, you know, in investments that, that will sustain uh, beyond their, their original, uh, or their, their, uh, expenditure? Um, so, uh, so we do, we do think that this budget, you know, supports a lot of those overarching goals. Um, and you might ask as we get into sort of the, some of the nuts and bolts, uh, you know, what's in there? Uh, well, in addition to some of the investments we've continued to talk about that we're carrying, uh, forward, um, I'm glad that folks out there are noticing that, you know, we've already made commitments to more nurses, more counselors, more custodians. Uh, we could add to that T-shirt, more social workers, more instructional specialists, more summer programming, more enrichment, more arts, more credit earning opportunities, more equity investments in our Title I CSI and TSI schools. And overall, if you've had a chance to begin studying volume two of the budget book, uh, you'll see per pupil expenditures are up, uh, significantly in our underserved schools, uh, as you look at the site-by-site uh, detailed breakdowns, uh, and that's intentional. So whether it's additional staffing or, or other resources. Uh, so Chief Delgado will walk you through, uh, in a bit more detail. Uh, uh, some of these, you know, at a high level, some of these proposed investments, again, uh, many of them initially here on the learning acceleration that you just heard described, uh, as well as some of those additional supports like, uh, instructional specialists. Um, and also, you know, the expansion of, of some of the programming that, that you just heard described as well. The other thing you heard us, uh, share with directors, because we have to get, uh, budgets out to our school leaders is, is a commitment early on to, uh, despite enrollment fluctuations, you know, and still undetermined, you know, where, where, uh, we expect that, that the majority of our students will be returning, um, anywhere that we did see the enrollment drop mainly in K and one. Uh, we, we funded our schools with stability of staff in mind. Uh, so those, those levels for the most part, uh, were kept level. Um, and so, uh, that, that, uh, we didn't want to be disruptive, uh, to our schools. So that was, uh, an initial sort of decision that, that was made early. And then a lot of our other, I'll just say at a high level, a lot of our investments truly are going towards those educational system shifts that are described in our vision. So we haven't deviated with new ideas. We've, we've maintained that document right in front of us and said, okay, what's the work that we're going to need to do in the coming year that continues this journey and trans- in the coming year that continues this journey and transformation? So that very much has informed a lot of some of the decisions and discretionary proposals that we're putting forward. So I'll hand it over to Chief Delgado. I'll just say upfront, as we dive into these more public processes, he and his team, many others who have worked, our budget finance team and many others, you know, have been working really hard. This is, this is really the season. It's been a different kind of process to do this, you know, not in the office per se, but they've been able to, once again, produce some, some thoughtful work. So I'm optimistic about our continued capacity to provide some innovative and reimagined opportunities to support our students. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to Nolberto.
Thank you Superintendent Guerrero.
You're still awake.
Yes, I am still awake. I'm still ready to go and just like amped up. I'm excited to be here. It's like first time, so you know, it's like ready to go, let's do this. And good, good evening, good morning, you know, just depending where you are in the world watching this. Really want to thank our, our echo Superintendent Guerrero's message and thank the budget staff for all the incredible work in getting us here. I, I've been here just for a few weeks, but it's just become apparent to me very quickly, the dedication of the team, just the countless hours spent and getting us to this proposed budget. So I definitely want to acknowledge the team's efforts. And, and just, you know, so for tonight, the intention is not to do the deep dive. You know, there's close to 500 pages out there, so we can save that for another night, another late night. But really, as Superintendent Guerrero was sharing, to share some key pieces of information to build our collective understanding of the current budgeting context, highlighting important efforts. And it's just been kind of like well sequenced for tonight, just the conversations we've been having, but really also setting the tone for the conversations in the upcoming years. So next slide, please. And, and so really this budget coincides with the Oregon Legislature's biennial budget cycle. So as, as we're putting together the budget, we're using the following state funding levels to design it. So $9.3 billion state school fund is what we're using to budget. We're assuming $778 million in the student investment account and $318 million for the high school success fund at the state level. And, and I'll share a little bit more, like what does that all mean? But from a nuts and bolts, putting the budget together, it represents about a $2 billion budget for next fiscal year. And on the next slide, although our total budget's approximately $2 billion, these two funds are like the key funds. So when we think about what's our basic operating budget? So feeding our students, transporting our students, paying our teachers, staffs, you know, literally the, the funding that keeps the lights on, it's these two key funds, the general fund and the special revenue fund. And the other billion dollars is, is primarily restricted to bond and capital projects, workers comp. So there's some very specific usages. So I just think it's important to just help create some context and understanding around some of the key funds that help us meet our goals and, and give us the flexibility with what we need to be doing. And it's also important to point out that like with the Student Investment Act and the high school success funds are aligned to our budgeting expectations, but it should be noted at the state level, the current proposal for the biennial education budget is at $9.1 billion. And if we go to the next slide, we, it, it just helps to set the tone of the environment in which we're budgeting. Although there, there are additional stimulus funding, but it's also important to level set with what we're starting through the state funding. And as a legislator convenes and discusses, we'll receive more information over the next few weeks. And, and really when we think about maintaining our current service levels, the, the budget target is $9.7 billion. And if, if we, if we end up committing at the state level to a $9.1 billion budget, it, it really will require us to just reassess some of our short term versus long term investments, particularly as, as, as we start thinking about the federal funding and, and federal stimulus dollars. So like what, what does this mean? So if we just go to, if we go to the next slide, it starts to help just kind of put it in context. That $600 million difference between 9.7 and 9.1 is translate to about 20, 22, $23 million less for us for next fiscal year. So this is like money going into the, the general fund. And to put it into context, that would equate to about six, about reducing the calendar by about six days or eliminating approximately 214 teaching positions. That's not what we're planning to do. So just to be clear, that, that's not what we're planning to do. We're planning to use some of our funding and, and the term I like, and I keep hearing it and I haven't used it before, is braiding. It's like, how are we braiding our funding sources to support our strategies and really push forward the, 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 the plan that we are putting in place? So less about the budget driving the strategy, but how are we taking the strategy and braiding our funding to support that strategy? So as I mentioned earlier, we're budgeting at $9.3 billion. And if we go to the next slide, that $9.3 billion has required us to identify approximately $3 million in savings from the general fund. This is primarily non-personnel expenditure. So for example, reducing supply budgets across operations or across the finance team and a variety of their different sources, proposing to use approximately $16 million from the fund balance. And in addition to transferring approximately $7 million from the general fund to the student investment account. So over, over the years, or excuse me, over the past year, we've essentially supported between the student investment account and the general fund, like each other have supported, or the funds have supported each other. So now as we're trying to level set our expectations with the general fund, knowing that we'll have additional student investment dollars, it's shifting some of those dollars from the general fund to the student investment account to really help balance the budget at 9.3. And on the next slide, as, as we think about our context, we're budgeting with moving variables, right? There, there are significant funding sources that we're looking to resolve over the next several months. And part of it is, you know, what's going to happen at the state level? And then just also as an example of moving variables, at some point a few weeks ago, our expectation through the Federal Emergency Management Agency was that, hey, we were going to get eligible expenditures reimbursed at 75%. And now it's like, hey, it's going to be at a 100%. That's welcome news. Next slide. In addition to that, there's also welcome news was the announcement by the state. We, we've just finished talking about what we plan to do with our, our summer investment and working in a design while now the, the state has released additional guidelines, everything from not supplanting, these funds are there to supplement to even more technical guidance around, hey, this funding should fall in this funding bucket. So all of that information's coming out. But as an example with moving variables, I mean, just a few weeks ago, a month ago, we, we weren't sure what this meant. And now we have this information, so we're making adjustments to the plan in order to, we're making adjustments to the funding plan in order to support the strategy. On the next slide, we then get into this other big component around the ESSR funding, so elementary and secondary emergency relief funding. And this is another big piece that is really there to support learning acceleration and, and ensuring that our, our students and community are, are, are recover. I don't want to use the word recovery because I just, if I was paying attention, that's not what we're supposed to be using. And thinking about all the opportunities that we need to put in place to support our, our students and families. And over the course of the past year, we've seen several rounds. We've seen three rounds of funding. And this slide's really just kind of like that big picture call out of what's happened at the national level, what's it meant for Oregon? And then eventually what's it meant, what, what has that funding meant for us? In addition to like very specific timelines. So in, being tied to specific timelines, we also know that these are one-time funds. If we go to the next slide, this is an example of moving pieces where we have projected spend in the current year, but also anticipating that we may receive additional adjustments from FEMA. We got additional funding from the state for summer programming. So as, as initial plans were put in place with the CARES Act to support reentry expenditures or whether with the ESSR second round, as we continue to focus on safety. And then eventually as we're putting this plan together, as, as, as not just for the time being, but to the earlier comments regarding how are we thinking about leveraging this funding? As, you know, put together, like the guidelines that were put together by the Council of Great City Schools that really is encouraging us to think about transformative investments that are going to be not just investments in, in items that are going to not allow us to maintain sustainability or items on that we know will provide value. So these are all the type of conversations that are happening around these different funding streams to help support our plans. And on the next slide, it starts to really put into perspective this different view that we're assessing the lifespan of the ESSR funds to build a strategic and sustainable plan. So we know that we're in this moment in time that we really want to catapult and springboard towards the next few years. And so being thoughtful around how this mix of investments is going to support our planning. And, and, and this goes back to all the conversations that the team has been having from the Strategic Budget Team meeting in, in, in January and February as, as a variety of cross collaborative stakeholders came together to really start putting the pieces together and identifying key investments, it's with that eye towards the next few years. And on the next slide, although we are budgeting with moving variables, and we know there's still funding details we're going to figure out, you know, one of the, we're, we're looking forward to the, the RFP with our summer partners and excited to see what sort of feedback and engagement we get from that. But we know that there's still variables that, that are moving, but we anticipate to invest in safety, stabilizing staff ratios, we've talked about learning acceleration, supporting the evolution of the strategic plan and, and knowing that that's also, you know, something that we're working towards to meeting the board established goals. We saw some of the data from MAP and like, what does that mean as we're putting, as we're all coming together? And a lot of, on the next slide, a lot of the Superintendent Guerrero already touched on. And it really is to further like double click into an example of, of areas that we're investing. It's not an exhaustive list, but it's just really an opportunity to highlight some of the important work that's happening within this budget. Because as, as we look at the budget, there's 500 pages, almost 500 pages. And, and a lot of these details don't necessarily come to the surface. And so I just thought it'd be great to highlight some of this. If we go to the next slide as well, it's also another example of how we're thinking about racial equity and social justice in our investments. And then really also just like the strategic and operational aspects. If we go to the next slide, it's also thinking about what would hybrid reversal look like? I really couldn't think of another phrase of saying it, but if, if we think about, as we come back to the, the likelihood of coming back to in-person learning, there's just moving furniture. There's just some very basic things that we need to support in addition to just paying a higher utility bills because of ventilation measures. So all of these variety of, of initiatives and actions are, are going to continue to inform us. In addition to as we continue to get information from our state and federal counterparts and, you know, especially feedback from our stakeholders, team's going to be working hard over the next month to, to get us to the finish line. And, and with that frame of mind around, how do we ensure that the budget doesn't drive the strategy? But how are we leveraging all of our funds to accomplish our strategy? Knowing that there's moving pieces, there's specific place, specific goals that we want to accomplish. And with that being said, I, I'd like to turn it over to, to Senior Director Ledesma just to share some insights into the ongoing efforts to align our, our work through the racial equity and social justice lenses. As, as I think as in the spirit of continuous improvement, it's, it's how do we take this lens and, and consider it as a transformative quality improvement tool to the work? So I'll turn it over to her on the next slide and she can share a little bit of insight.
Thank you. Hello again. So, you know, like Chief Delgado told us, we really believe that our PPS racial equity and social justice lens can be a transformative tool for us. We think that we can, it can be used to improve our planning, our decision-making and resource allocation, which will ultimately lead us to a system that we think is more racially equitable and just. Our hope is that both through, through both frequent application and the documentation of that application, our system will really develop a shared analysis and a culture of critical thinking and reflection. So to continue to build on our RSJ lens work, I really, I had the opportunity, the delightful opportunity to work with Dr. Brown, who you heard from earlier, and with Chief Delgado and the superintendent, and the superintendent to really update our lens. So you're all very familiar with the lens that we've used. What we wanted to do is to think how we can update it to really align, refine and add additional questions that are anchored to data. And so some of these questions include, well, so, so our Chief of Systems Performance, Dr. Brown, he, he and his team created a dashboard. And that dashboard looks at several key indicators around racial equity. And so we are asking questions like, how does the proposed action specifically close the disparity between student and teacher diversity? How does the proposed action specifically address graduation for native students? And so how does the, how does the proposed action create opportunities to increase student achievement in math and English language arts? We wanted to really ask some sharper questions and to really root that to data, not only to get to surface answers and innovations around those answers, but also to increase our data literacy as a system. So what we did is that we wanted to apply the lens to the proposed budget. As it was, as we talked about earlier, there were many times when we asked elements of these questions, we did use this, use this dashboard. And so what we wanted to do is for the proposed budget itself is to show you the staff copy. And so I believe in your materials, you received a copy of the staff, the staff sort of filled out lens where we went through and really sort of reflected on the budget proposal as a whole and answered not only the six, six prompts that you're familiar with, but also the new prompts that are anchored to data. And so we're really looking forward to continue to find opportunities to apply the lens. So we'll be working with the CBRC or with our community engagement efforts. And then we also hope that we can work with you all in future board work sessions to think about how we collectively can use the lens and apply the lens, document what we learned from that and continue to, to refine our learning and our processes at, at PPS. So, so more to come. We did want to kind of share that with you and really, really excited about continuing this work with you.
And, and I'll, I'll add that as, as we're taking the lens and, and processing it, it, it starts right raising questions around not just the budget and outcomes, but really then the granular consideration around what are some of the leading indicators and then the lagging indicators? And then the lagging indicators? How does those then fall into the logic model that we want to eventually invest in to support the work around that? And so it's, it's, it's really, when we start thinking about being a data informed and, and moving our investments to, to support that, it's, it's forcing us to start addressing and answer those questions. And definitely it's going to be exciting and, and, and more to come. And I believe that is it.
So Mr. Delgado, I'm not sure what your title is. You are chief head director superstar?
No, 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 I haven't. Chief Nolberto is perfectly fine if you can roll the L and Rs.
I'm trying. Could you help us understand the next steps in the timeline as we talk about the budget? Because I know we do have some questions and we want to talk about when, what are the steps going forward? So that we are engaging with the public, that the board members get their questions asked. If you could give us that sort of schedule, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So then our very next opportunity will be next Tuesday. We'll have opportunity to engage with the public as well. And as a, essentially a forum to go through and have a discussion around the budget, have an additional in-depth discussion regarding applying the racial equity and social justice lens. And that would also be like really a week from today, the next opportunity to continue to flesh out the, the conversation. And then.
We've only scheduled two hours for that conversation, given on, you know, tonight's board meeting, we might want to think about more than two hours. But okay, and then after that meeting next week.
I, I would like to join you in just saying that I would like to have more time because if next Tuesday is more about a community forum, I think there's a lot of just bigger questions and discussion that as a board we need, we need to have before we dive into a community discussion. I mean, it's the largest budget, you know, we've got a $200 million increase in, in the budget. And it seems like that going straight to a community forum and skipping over any sort of larger board framing would be premature. So I, I would hope that we'd have additional time, since we're not going to have that tonight, to have that discussion.
I think that the next meeting is a work session, correct? Is it with members of the public or is it just the board work session?
The next meeting, as you, the one a week from today?
Yes.
That is a meeting with the public. So it, and then thereafter, we have another opportunity to present with the board.
Okay, well, it's.
I can certainly, we, we can certainly follow up with the details of engagement. And I think that it's from the perspective of, of making sure we have the right conversations. I think, you know, we can be nimble and, and be able to accommodate and, and work towards making sure we get to answer as, as many questions as, as, as possible.
You're right that we do need some time for the board members to be able to ask questions and have a conversation about this. Now, now is not the time because we're all tired, staff is tired. So I think what we'll do is get with Roseanne and we will make sure that we have time for the board to ask questions ahead of that time with the public on the 27th. Does that satisfy Julia?
Well, or I, I, I mean, I agree that it's actually would be beneficial for the public for us to have had that process before they have an opportunity to weigh in as well because they can hear, you know, our questions and what the answers have been and all of that rich discretion. So, I mean, I, I agree. I think we should maybe repurpose that meeting to just a board work session and then reschedule a community town hall.
So I will work Roseanne to make sure that we have the chance to have a board work session before the community town hall, whether that's changing the date or whether that's adding an additional meeting between now and the 27th.
And the other reason, just I think it's important to front load this conversation is if we're being asked to go have conversations with legislators about increasing the, the overall number from 9.1 to 9.3, we better be able to explain why we need more money when we're getting $200 million more. And then the other thing is when we're out in the community, the federal money that has, you know, is much advertised, that's been spent about four or five times over. So, you know, being, being really clear, like how much it is, how exactly even, I mean, we might have to unbraided temporarily before we re-braid it back in, but so the people can see where it is. Because there's just going to be so much scrutiny on the resources we have, especially if we're saying like, hey, we're going to have to make $3 million in cuts. I just think we have to be absolutely crystal clear sort of where, where all the money is in the different pots. And then also how it impacts like a full reopening next year and all the other topics. Cause I think we, we can't just skip over that and approve a budget.
Sorry to jump in on this point, but I, I just wanted to make sure I was, because I, I assume we've already noticed the community session. Was that, it was next week, right? Yeah, I would be very reluctant to unnoticed that. I, I, I don't see any problem continuing board conversation in parallel with the community conversation. But I think if, if we've already had, had that, I, I think that could be really beneficial to us. I don't, I don't, I don't think there was going to be benefit of, of us having a conversation prior to that. I think there is benefit of us having more conversation as a board, but I think it could, it can happen in parallel with the community conversation.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with board numbers and make sure that we have ample time to, to ask the questions, to have the conversation we need to have. We'll add additional meetings. Is there anything further before we move off this in this moment? I know the budget, again, we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of conversations. This is the initial introduction of the budget. We will meet next week. We will add additional meetings. We will have more public engagement. Anything further before we, we move on to our adjournment at this time?
Yeah, just really quickly, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Julia. No, no, I actually just wanted to, you know, kind of along the lines of what Julia just said, I actually feel like the superintendent's proposed budget message is really, really clear about revenues that are coming in. And, and Nolberto, I, I thought your, your slides also like show really, really clear where the revenues are coming in. And then we have a lot of bullets about great things where we're, we're spending money, but it, it's less easy to crosswalk dollar amounts. And again, maybe that is the braiding that's happening, but sort of, I think I'm just seconding what Julia was saying. I think to the extent we can, we can show at, at a very high level, I, I don't think we need to get into the weeds on it, but at a very high level, all, you know, where the money's coming from and then where we're spending will be super helpful in those public conversations, so.
I, I think we're hearing the, the tenor of what directors are hoping for in, in sort of having a concise understanding. I know Nolberto and I exchanged an example earlier today around, you know, just concretely listing revenue source and, and the chunks of proposed investments. But as superintendents have been advocating and we shared with the governor on Monday, it's like, these are restricted funds in many cases, like you can't just come in and backfill your gaps. And so if the current service level isn't funded at the level it would need to be, then how do you have cuts on one hand and then take in hundreds of millions of dollars on the other? So that's the quandary here. And it is going to be hard for the public to understand that in some cases, but we didn't make those rules, right? And so they're, they're there for an intended purpose.
And that's exactly why I think Superintendent Guerrero, we need to have this like really sort of explicit narrative because it is going to be complicated because I've now been in a couple of community meetings where people are like, hey, we can just pay for this with that federal money. And, you know, they're talking about an ongoing program and the federal money is one time. And I do think also the state legislature and our federal delegation is going to be like, hey, we delivered this money for you. Now tell us where, where it went. And so I, I think there's great strategies. And I like all the braiding because it shows that we're integrating and aligning our resources. It's just, we're going to have to be very transparent on where that is, what works and what doesn't. So if, because I can't imagine trying to have a conversation right now with the community about, like there's going to be something cut in this budget because they, they just won't believe it.
This is the tradition in Oregon that we have where we get extra money from something like the Student Success Act or this CARES Act. And then the legislature cuts the school fund or doesn't increase it. And so thinking we have all this extra money, but because it's for specific things, we actually do end up making cuts. And so I'd like to see us in Oregon really continue to fund our schools fully and, and that'll be further conversation. So we will, our next meeting is going to be May 4th to discuss the budget. We will get with directors as soon as possible to set up some more time for conversation. I encourage directors to put their questions in writing to our budget team so that they are well-prepared to answer our questions because this is deep and important work that we're doing. Is there anything else before we move to adjournment? Scott?
Question, when will volume one be posted for the public?
Is that? Is that posted? I believe it is.
I, I took a quick look at the budget page where it has annual budgets and I couldn't find it. If there's, there's a link handy. And then, and then volume two is still not quite ready for primetime. Is that correct?
Volume two should be, it is ready. There is a digital version and I'll circle back with the team on whether or not they got posted to the website, but they are both available.
Well, at least get the two volumes.
And Superintendent Guerrero, is this budget that's been proposed, is that based on the premise that in August, when school starts, we'd be opening full-time in person?
That's the assumption.
That's our goal. All right, I want to thank everybody for your time tonight. I know it's a, a very late meeting and especially to CFO Delgado, thank you so much. I know you're working on moving here is what I understand, but for now you're still on the East Coast. And so 2:00 AM, congratulations, 2:00 AM, congratulations. I think I just froze there, sorry, everyone. All right, is there anything further before we adjourn our meeting tonight? All right, as you have all heard, our next gathering will be on May 4th as we do some work on the budget. And our next regular school board meeting will be on May 11th. Please, board directors, send your items for agenda setting to Roseanne by 11:00 AM so that we can consider that in our morning agenda setting meeting. Thank you, everyone, and good night.